Which means that you still have work for us to do here on this side. And Father, in a month will be honored, Father, my ancestors, those, Father God, that struggled in order for a country to be built, Lord, we celebrate you for bringing us together today despite the color of our skin, but backed up by the content of our character. In a country, Father God, now where there's divisiveness, our prayer, Father, is that our city, Lord, unites behind the cross. And we see, Father, those that are in positions of power and respect those, Father, that have ruled over us, while at the same time, Father, looking to heaven and honoring the God that has placed them in the positions of power that they have. Touch every person on this diocese, Father, and today as they make decisions that will benefit our city, our prayer, Father, is that you would give them wise counsel. Let them come together in the spirit of unity, for what two walk together, Father God, they will only agree if they walk together. So, God, we pray, Lord, your power and covering over this city, over our mayor as well, Father, in the name of Jesus. And as we move forward, Father, to a brighter and a better day, our prayer is that we remember, Lord, that the lives of every individual, Father, are important, whether they're a life of a brown, whether a life of a white, or whether the life of a black, Father, the life of those individuals absolutely matter to you, as well as it matters to us, because you died for us. It's in the name of Jesus we thank you for these amazing individuals, for Christ's sake we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield, Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Asparza.
Present.
Soria.
Arius.
Present.
Brandau.
Here.
And now we're going to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
I have several changes. So, the revised agenda, item one was added under the consent calendar, and it's a resolution... I'm sorry, item one was added under the consent calendar, and that's the revised agenda. Changes to the agenda include 1M, which is file ID 191217, resolution approving a final map of track number 5592 in District 4. We've got file ID 191144, which is item 1B. It states on the agenda that it's subject to Mayor's veto, however, it is not. The 1015 item, file ID 19-1200, an appearance by Margaret Frey to discuss homeless issues in Fresno, we were unable to reach her to schedule her to come in today, so she probably won't be here. Item number 3C, file ID 191173, resolution approving the application of grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation Infrastructure for rebuilding America Program for Veterans Boulevard Corridor Improvement Project and authorizing the execution of documents by Public Works Director Designing. That is not subject to Mayor's veto. And finally, item 3D, file ID 191195, it's a bill amending the FMC to the redeposit by members of the Fire and Police Retirement System of contributions withdrawn by former spouses. This item has been removed from the agenda by staff. Those are all the changes I have.
Okay, so that last item, what number was that? What? 3D has been removed.
3D is in danger.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, do I have a... Any councilmembers?
That good?
We have a motion by Councilmember Soria and a second by Councilmember Arius, all in favor?
I have items two. Both from the consent.
We're gonna do that in a minute. You've got plenty of time for that. All right, so the agenda's been approved. Now I have to approve the minutes for the January 31st meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any changes to those minutes?
I don't have any changes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
That good?
A motion by Councilmember Soria and a second by Councilman Capriolio, all in favor? Okay. Now we have several ceremonial presentations, and our first one is with Councilmember Soria, and that's a presentation of SPCA Pet of the Month. And here we have a little doggie making its way to the podium. And I already know this doggy's name. It's perfect for today. So, Councilmember Soria, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. So, it is my pleasure to be able to present the Pet of the Month today. And as Councilmember Brandau or Council President Brandau mentioned, the name is very appropriate. Her name is Valentina. So, you know, to everyone again, Happy Valentine's Day. But we wanna, you know, every month we get an opportunity to showcase the animals that are housed at SPCA that need some TLC and need a really great home. And so, we wanna encourage the residents here in the city of Fresno to look at the SPCA as an option to adopt a pet, and also, if you can adopt a pet, to figure out a way to contribute so that these pets do get the opportunity to get to a loving home. And so, we wanna thank... Thank you for being here every week or every month to present the pets. If you do wanna tell us a little bit about what you guys have going on.
Thank you. Okay, so this is Valentina. She's probably about like three months old. She's mixed with like a large breed and a small breed. So, she's gonna be one of them funky sizes. She might be about 20 to 25 pounds, but she has those short legs. You know, she's just your all-American, but honestly, we don't really know. She could be a terrier with all kinds of other things. If you... For those that are interested in helping in one way or another, so adoption, as she mentioned, is one of those great things you can do. But if you do have pets, don't forget to spay neuter. It is Spay Neuter Awareness Month, so you can get that service done really cheap at the SPCA. If not, it's only $35 there. We also recommend the Hope Foundation that's here in Fresno that does really low-cost spay neuter. So, those things are super vital in Fresno, adoption in concurrence with the spay neuter in order to save more lives. So, thank you.
Ms. Morello, there might be somebody here that hasn't got a Valentine's Day present.
That's what I was about to say. I know there may be a taker, so come and meet her, and you can put a nice little bow, and I'm sure it would be a great Valentine's gift for someone today. Thank you again.
All right. The next ceremonial... Yes, let's give them a hand. The next ceremonial is a recognition of Support the Blue Day and a proclamation, and that's from myself, Councilman Capriolio, and Councilman Brettafield, and we'll be right there.
Oh, my gosh. He has returned. Hey, Jerry, welcome home, buddy. And Steve's coming. Well, good morning, everyone. Another fantastic day at City Hall, and we're so happy to have Chief back. Rodney here has been in charge of this program for a long time. He is officially the Executive Director of the Fresno Police Chaplaincy, so... And I see a lot of familiar faces in here, a lot of PD officers that have helped all of us out in our respective districts, and welcome to City Hall. So, we were thinking, what better way to show love and respect for our Fresno Police Department than Valentine's Day? And on this Valentine's Day, to present a proclamation for you, because we love you guys and girls. We love all of you, for sure. So, I've supported this cause since day one, as you know, and after that, I thought, what a great way to get our council involved. So, as a result, Steve and Gary have stepped up, and at the end of our presentation, I'm sure you're gonna challenge the people behind me that are listening, sorta, to step up and support the chaplaincy and this great event coming up on the 23rd. So, again, this is a way for Support Blue Fresno. It's a perfect avenue for us as a community to show our officers that we truly care, and we love you guys and everything that you do for us. Could you tell us a little bit about the 23rd of February?
Not this Saturday, next Saturday at Woodward Park. We started four years ago with a run, just as a vehicle to build relationships within community and for education purposes. We started with 400 runners, and we were pretty excited about that. Four years later, we will cap the run at 4,200 this next Saturday, and we're at... We're about 3,900 right now, so if you're interested in registering, it's gotta be done here really shortly. Those funds, in part, will also go this year to assist the Vang family, one of our officers that we've recently lost, and other educational venues that we put on in the Police Department. We invite teens from across Fresno to come into the Police Department in an 11-week academy and expose them to the different assignments, and then we have an explorer program that we piggyback off of that, so it's a...
Recruiting all the time.
We are constantly recruiting, and we start looking for our officers at 13 years old, and it's well-received by our community, and we're so grateful for the partnership with the council and the support. It means a lot to our organization, the Fresno Police Department, the men and women who are working diligently to keep this community safe. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you. It is good to be back, and thank you, all of you, for that warm welcome. You know, when Rod Lowery, our Senior Chaplain, started the Support Blue Run, as he said, 400 people that signed up, and now we're gonna pass 4,000. And I think some folks, it's misunderstood in terms of what Support Blue really means. But Support Blue is really a support, not only of our officers, but of our officers in partnership with the community. As Rod says, these funds that are raised from this, we do have a youth academy that we put on, we have the teen academy, we have an explorer program, and it's really intended to reach out to our underprivileged youth, our underrepresented youth, and get them into the Police Department so that we can be more reflective of our community. Our chaplaincy's also in about half of our elementary schools with a program called Rise Resiliency in Student Education, where we reach out to these elementary kids who are going through a traumatic experience at home with maybe things that are going on with drug use, and maybe mother or father got arrested, whatever. And sometimes those kids are filled with anger. And so, our chaplains are focused on getting that anger replaced with love so that they can get an education. And so, it's much more than just supporting law enforcement, supporting Blue, it's really supporting our community through our chaplaincy, through our officers, and we are very, very blessed in this community to have the level of support that we have, and quite frankly, the partnerships that have been developed here. And it's... I think this is a great day to do it with all of you in this audience, and so I'm pleased to be here, and thank you, council, for recognizing us, all of you, in that partnership. And Rod, thank you for what you do for our chaplaincy. God bless you guys, thank you.
Steve would like to say something.
No.
He's my brother, my little brother.
Hey, you know, Chief, we've got a challenge for you this year. Cap and I wanna walk. I think it's a good year for us to race against you, and we might have a chance of beating you this time. So... No? No? He's still gonna pull it off.
Bring it on.
First week back, he's still gonna pull it off. I get it. You're looking good, Chief. We just wanna reiterate... I just wanna reiterate, we love everything that you do. I love the community-based policing that you just spoke about. You've done great things in Northwest Fresno, including adding Santa's Village to the Pinedale Community Center. And so, you've done a lot of great things, but we always wanna let you know that we support you, we love you. And that's not just the officers, Chief, it's your whole staff, it's everybody that makes your job happen in our city, and so...
Thank you, Steve.
All right.
Well, not a whole lot, Ted. We all love our law enforcement. You guys are the frontline protectors for us, and I know all the great work that you do, so I encourage people to come out and do the run. My wife does it every year, she keeps encouraging me to do it, but I come out there, but I haven't run yet.
I come out for the tacos.
And is there gonna be a Chief Dyer bobblehead this... We had one last year, no?
I never know, it's a surprise to me.
And Chief, it's great to see you back in your form. Glad you're feeling so much better. Thank you, guys.
We'd like to have all the staff come on down. We have a new lieutenant in Northwest area. You guys come on down, take a photo up with us. I got my biker gang over here, my bicycle, the cops, come on down. You guys, this is a team effort. We love each and every one of you and all you do for us.
Come on in here, join us. You're the centerpiece there, promoting and everything.
Oh, I forgot. You gotta read the proclamation.
We'll take a picture first.
Hold on.
Whoa. Whoa.
Whereas Support Blue Fresno was established by Fresno Police Chaplaincy as a grassroots effort to broaden support for the men and women who protect our great city of Fresno. And whereas Support Blue Fresno aims to foster trust and confidence between officers and the communities they serve while providing opportunities to community members to visibly show their support for law enforcement. And whereas these efforts provide education for our youth and community members to enhance relationships and understanding with officers in order to restore and maintain trust and mutual respect. And whereas our police officers are mentors, familiar faces, and pillars of the community, they are hard-working mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, and have dedicated their lives to public service, working every day to build brighter future as displayed by numerous programs and activities in the community. And whereas after three successful years, Support Blue Fresno enters this fourth year of what we hope to be many more to come. While the narrative between our police and our community has improved within the last few years, there is no better time to strengthen the relationship between the community and those who protect us than every day. And whereas with the support and encouragement from the community, sponsors, the Fresno Police Chaplaincy, and community members across Fresno, we applaud all those who stand up and run for Blue Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council members do hereby applaud Support Blue Fresno for continuing to broaden support for the police officers who dedicate their lives to ensuring public safety for everyone in the city of Fresno. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, February 14, 2019, to be Support Blue Fresno Day in the city of Fresno.
I don't know if I'm pronouncing that...
Lykem.
Lykem. Phew, thank you. I'm still getting over the chief's jabs at me. Nora Lykem Day, and that's from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning. Honored to be here today. Nora, are you here?
Yes.
Come... Oh, there you are, there. It's my privilege to do a proclamation for Nora Lykem Day. Nora started her career in Fresno County, I would say, many years ago.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And started with the city of Fresno in 1989 in our Water Division, and I've been... Since my time on the council, the 10 years, the eight years there, two years here, I've seen you everywhere, including my house, helping me with my water conservation, and she led the effort, and she did help me save some water, by the way. She led the effort to on water conservation, to the state changing the laws, and has always been there. I'm thinking of Northeast Water Discord issue, I've seen her there everywhere. She's known as the First Lady of Public Utilities or the Lady Water Wizard. Anyway, congratulations. Here, Nora.
What a surprise, and I'm very humbled by this honor. Thank you, and thank you for recognizing water conservation. You know, that's so near and dear to my heart and everybody here from Conservation and Water Division and DPU. It's such a noble thing to help with the city's water supply for the consumers, and that's one reason we feel so fulfilled in doing that work. And I, again, I thank you for this honor and to be recognized. My family can't be here today, my sister's in the hospital, but this is my other family.
City family.
This is... So, and I would also like to recognize my mentor, Martin McIntyre, who helped me get started, and certainly the rest of the team.
You're welcome.
So, thank you.
Yeah, just wanna mention that Nora's commitment to public service is really unprecedented, it speaks for itself. 60 years in the water, working in the water world, as well as the numerous boards and commissions that you have committed to during your own personal time. And so, that's an unprecedented track record, and the things that you've done to the city, I think the community has benefited greatly from your service. Just personally, I've had the opportunity to work with Nora since 2002, so...
I raised her.
Thank you. Thank you for your inspiration, your motivation, your guidance in my career here. This is not the end of the road, this is... We are celebrating a milestone here, we're transitioning from one chapter to the next, and Nora, you'll always be part of our family, and we look forward to working with you for years to come. Thank you.
I think Mike summed it up pretty good, but I do wanna talk about, coming from Fresno County Water Works, I go back to 1986 when I started with the county water works and...
Hired him.
Hired me. Twice.
Twice.
But I think Nora has outstanding public capabilities, she is great with our customers, and like she said, she's a tribute to getting people to conserve water. I mean, a lot of people in Fresno, years ago, in Martin's time, there was a lot of people that water was just flowing, it came out of the faucet. Nora is a tribute to getting everybody, and I mean, we've done a terrific job, this staff and Nora, of getting everybody on board, so I appreciate your help, Nora, and I appreciate all the years. City Clerk, would you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas Norma Lykem began her career as an administrative assistant with the Fresno County Water Works District in November 1959, and promoted to Projects Operations Managers in 1979. And whereas Nora joined the city of Fresno's Water Division in January 1989 as a management analyst when the Fresno County Water Works Districts merged with the city of Fresno. And whereas in April 2004, Nora was promoted to Water Conservation Supervisor and remained in the position until her recent retirement. And whereas Nora has served the Fresno community through multiple leadership roles in a number of professional associations, including the City of Fresno Planning Commission, Central Valley Water Awareness Committee, Salvation Army Adult Rehabilitation Council, Fresno Leadership Alumni Association, California Association of Leadership Programs, Shenzhen Gardens, and American Lung Association. And whereas Nora has provided wisdom, leadership, and planning while implementing the city of Fresno's water conservation program, including oversight of the program's watering schedule, water use restrictions and enforcement. And whereas Nora has been the face of the Water Conservation Education and Outreach Program, having spent countless hours at schools, community centers, and at annual events, including the Fresno State Plan Exchange, the Fresno... The Big Fresno Fair, and the Fresno Home and Garden Shows. And whereas with the length of service, knowledge, and cheery demeanor, Nora has entered the unofficial title as First Lady of Public Utilities. And whereas Nora's career... And whereas Nora's career in the water industry has spanned 60 years, and she has no plans to stop contributing her passion for water issues to better our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Lee Bran, do hereby proclaim February 14, 2019, to be Nora Lykem Day in the city of Fresno, and extend my best wishes upon her retirement.
Come on.
Nora Lykem.
Nora was the first female chair of the Fresno City Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Nora. Thank you, Mayor. Our next ceremonial is a proclamation of Black History Month. That's sponsored by Councilmember Asparza.
If either I reached out to you or my office reached out to you, I'd love if you'd please join me at the front here. All of you folks know who you are. This is a community proclamation, I think it should be presented as such. Come on up.
Good morning.
Listen, it's an honor to be here this morning to present the Black History Month Proclamation on behalf of the... on behalf of the city of Fresno. You know, while the African-American community here in Fresno has come a long way, there's no doubt that we still have a long way to go. And I think all of us in this room have read the reports, the severe quality of life issues impacting the African-American community here in Fresno, and many of us in this room have actually lived and experienced those issues in themselves. But in spite of that, what you see up here today, this powerhouse of a community standing behind me, is really only a fraction, represents only a fraction of the leadership in this community. And these folks you see behind me, they are faith leaders, they're education leaders, civic leaders, they're youth leaders, elected leaders, both past and present here in Fresno. And they stand on the shoulder of giants, and they are giants in themselves. Many of them require no introduction, but there are a couple of folks who I did want to introduce to you. Only one of us up here can accept the proclamation, right? We didn't make a hundred different pieces of paper. And so, today I want to introduce to you both Keon White and Kishon White. Would you please join me up here? So, Kishon and Keon, they are Fresno natives raised on the southwest side of the city. After being exposed to community building through mentors and programs such as Fresno Boys and Men of Color, they developed a passion for community service. And that passion led Kishon to his work on a citywide clean air initiative, including an application and grant funding as a recruiter and educator for the project at Edison High School. Keon has also began his own initiative in which he has organized youth of color to improve the living conditions and the quality of life in his community, through a campaign he has named Invest in the West. Keon will be graduating from Edison High School this spring, 2019. And he, yeah. And he has ambitions of going to college and gaining skills to bring back to this very community. And Kishon, I want to stand right here, I want to make sure you guys get pictures, I'm going to soak this all up, because, you know, right here, right now he's here with a city council member, but next week he's meeting President Obama. So, I want to soak up the fame that comes with that, I want to congratulate him personally for his work. You might have seen these gentlemen in the newspaper or on TV. Additionally, I did want to introduce Marcel Woodruff. Marcel is a mentor to these two young men. So Marcel is a native of Fresno, a graduate of Bullard High School. He obtained his BS in Computer Science from Xavier University of Louisiana, and the Master of Divinity from FPU Fresno Pacific University Seminary. He has served as a mentor, advisor, and life coach for Fresno youth, primarily from the southwest and southeast areas of Fresno for fourteen years. And during that time has worked with over three thousand youth here in the city. He currently works as a youth organizer with Faith in the Valley Fresno, and also sits on the boards of Fresno Madera Youth for Christ, Neighborhood Industries, and the ACLU Northern Federation. Marcel is the husband to Jelena Woodruff, a father of three, and a man who clearly loves his community. So I want to present the proclamation to you, gentlemen. Of all the folks standing up here with me today, you are the ones taking it home. Hang it proud, hang it next to your Obama certificate, I'm sure he's going to give you one as well. You know, I want to give you a chance, all of you, a chance to say just a few words.
How y'all doing on this lovely morning? Before I even get started, I just want to thank everybody for this, you know, I'm greatly appreciative for me, it's all for my community, so it don't really feel like an award, it just feel like something I've just been doing, it's just a little perk on it, man. And I just want to thank y'all for everything, so, um, back to all I'm saying, I would like to thank the city of Fresno and Councilman Asparza for this proclamation. And I'm passionate about my community, and I'm passionate about my people in my community, and I would like to thank the Fresno Boys and Men of Color, Men's Alliance, and Faith in the Valley, but motivated me as this great advocate and upcoming leader in Fresno. And because of them, I'm currently working with my brothers and peers on enrichment programs and campaigns to help and make my community a better community for everybody. And I am a young man who loves his people, who loves his community, and to my people and to my community, I would like to thank you for the recognition, and hopefully I plan to sit up there with all the great council members in my day. So, thank you.
Good job.
I just want to thank you, Councilman Asparza, for this. It's an honor to receive this as a member of an amazing, resilient, and invaluable body of people and community who are doing great work in the city of Fresno. And I also want to thank you for recognizing the work that's been done with and by black youth, who are emerging as leaders, leading champions in environmental justice and educational justice, and working to make one healthy Fresno for everybody. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody, just to piggyback off of what Keon said, thank you, because this is pretty much not a single, this is all a team and community effort, pretty much putting us where we are today, so I would like to acknowledge that first off. And foremost, so my name is Kishon White, if y'all don't know, and I'm a youth environmental justice advocate from Fresno, California, and I'm a member of the Fresno Boys and Men of Color. And for the past, and for the past four years, I've been pretty much advocating and pretty much building myself, not only as a leader, but as a young man to pretty much present myself in pretty much spaces that not a lot of young black men will be into. So I would like, pretty much, I would like to point out that I'm pretty much opening the door, not for only myself, but pretty much the next generation that feel like their voice don't matter, and also they feel like they want to do something, but they don't know how to get it started. I would just like to say, if you got, if you find the right mentor and the right group of people that really want to nurture and what your passion and your love is, just pretty much go out and set forth and do it, and don't let nobody say you can't otherwise.
Very, very strong words from very strong young men. Again, I want to thank you for the impact you're having in our community. I think what you're doing in terms of, you know, bringing attention to the air quality issue here in the city of Fresno is very important for current and future generations. And I grew up here in the valley, severe asthma by the age of three, I was hospitalized seven times, went to Valley Children seven times as a kid. So from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate that. And I know we're here to celebrate Black History Month, and all the sacrifices that have been made by African-Americans throughout our country and this community over the years, but I really wanted to shine the light on that by showcasing the future, future leaders of our city. So, thank you. And Madam Clerk, where are you? Oh, Brianna, Brianna's spilling. Brianna, will you please read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas February is nationally proclaimed Black History Month, to honor African-Americans and thank them for their countless contributions to the city of Fresno. From the very beginning of our city, African-Americans were essential to the development and success of our community. And whereas we, as a diverse community, thank these champions of justice for bringing our country to a better and more socially just time. And although the fight for equality continues on today, we remember how far the African-American community has brought us, and thank them for continuing to illuminate the path to social equality. And whereas Fresno's residents continue to honor the sacrifices of the men, women, and children who are victims of harassment, discrimination, and violence solely because of the color of their skin. Their courage continues to inspire us as a community to fight for equality on every front. And whereas the city of Fresno celebrates community leaders, civil rights leaders, religious leaders, business leaders, and elected leaders, and youth leaders. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Nelson Asparza, and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month.
Thank you for coming, yes, yeah. I appreciate y'all coming. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah.
All right. Which one is up? All right. Now it's time for council member reports and comments. We've had a lot of ceremonials this morning, but let's keep these short, council members, Councilmember Soria.
Just very quickly, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting, funding for the Quigley Park Master Plan. We are having our first community outreach meeting that is happening on Monday, February 25th, at Williams Elementary School Cafeteria. We want to invite community residents, business owners in the neighborhood, also the education leaders there that work at Williams Elementary, to join us at this outreach meeting so that we can plan for the future of Quigley Park. I think that's an exciting time that we could see potential investment there. And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Two days ago, I met with Fresno State Veterans Organization, a great group of young men and women who have served our country proudly, and they're organizing at the university, and I told them that as a city, we would step up and help them in their transition back to education, back to our community. So it was a great event, and we're going to get them involved with numerous veteran organizations here in Fresno. So it was really fun and exciting to meet all these true warriors. Second, I don't know if you watched the game last night, those Bulldogs, they're awesome. So Boise State had us on the ropes, sort of like Jose Ramirez, those early rounds, if you will, and in the last thirty seconds, Fresno State pulled it off, another great victory. So we're tied for second place in the Mountain West, and if you get a chance to support the Bulldogs, please do so. It was just exciting, it was a nail-biter, it was really fun. The wrestling team has done real well this year, so Fresno State's obviously my district, and as my colleagues tease me, it's my crown jewel, that and my airport, but they are on fire, so there's some momentum, and please join and support Fresno State Bulldogs.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members for comments this morning? Okay, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any would like to pull from the consent calendar?
One G, Council President, one G.
One G?
Yes.
Okay.
One D, and one I.
Any others? So we will then listen, yeah, Carrie?
I just have a quick question on one J.
One J?
Yeah.
So we'll pull it for, okay, one J.
Can I do also one A, please?
One A? All right, so one, yeah, one A, one J, one G, one D, and one I have been polled, they will be handled individually, and so I want to address the balance of the consent calendar. If any members of the public are here to address any item, these other items are going to be heard separately, so you have a chance, if that's an item you want to talk about, but any other item not separate, please come forward and you'll have a chance. Please give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Sure. My name's Mike Carbasi, and my address is 1731 West Bullard Avenue, Suite 110, Fresno, California 93711. Oh, that address is good for flowers, by the way, for Valentine's Day, feel free, no problem. Okay, ready to go? Okay, so Council President Brando, and your fellow council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about item one L, the Money Back Guarantee. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. I support the Money Back Guarantee. My family has a small business in Fresno, this month is our fortieth anniversary, we have an area rug store in northwest Fresno. We're a working family, my dad worked really hard, day in and day out, to provide for my brother and I and my mom, and now I'm working really hard to provide for him and my family, and I want to be here forty years from now. And the Money Back Guarantee does a lot to help with that, and it also helps other small businesses too. Fresno has a perception problem, and I think perception can be just as dangerous as fact. People feel that it's not as user-friendly to submit plans and get them approved. And I want to call you out, Councilman Brando and Councilman Brettafeld, because I thank you for co-sponsoring this measure. It's a unique opportunity for all the council to show that they do support small businesses like mine. One thing it also does is it keeps our tax dollars here in Fresno. Small businesses have a great value, in fact, in the last, since the recession, sixty-two percent of the jobs created in this country aren't from big corporations, they're from small business. And the Money Back Guarantee sends a clear message that Fresno wants businesses here, you don't want us going to Madera or Clovis or another city. Those cities are great, but Fresno's the big dog, and it's our community. And those tax dollars, the tax base that we get, provides for the essential city services like our police and firefighters, or maintenance in neighborhoods, or parks, which are all really important, and I'm going to say it, potential salary raises for our city employees that work really hard. So another factor is, we have a lot of development happening in west Fresno, and that encompasses Council District One, Two, and Three, from west of the 99, from Herndon to Clinton, and there's a lot of new plans coming in. Wouldn't it be great if the people that open businesses there and create jobs are people from the neighborhood, not necessarily outsiders? And the Money Back Guarantee will help with that process. As presented today, it seems like the Money Back Guarantee is well thought out, it has plans for any potential contingencies, and it's ready for a six-month pilot program. Today's Valentine's Day, what a great day to show your love for small businesses, because this is not just about big businesses and development, this is about small family businesses in Fresno. Please support the Money Back Guarantee. Last thing I'll say is, when you consider the cost of the plan, that is a legitimate question to have asked, also consider the cost of not implementing it, there's an opportunity cost to the city, so we need more investment and more businesses from within coming up. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mike. Any other members of the public like to address any of the consent items not going to be polled and heard separately? All right, I don't see anybody, do I have a motion to pass the balance?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Councilman Capriolio, second from Councilman Arius, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. Now we're going to listen to the individual items in the order they were given to me, and so, item one I? Who's that?
It's. Staff available to answer questions?
Morning, Mike Carbasi, Department of Public Utilities.
Couple of questions on this item. Who else is joining the JPA for this, you know, potentially building a temperance flat town?
The, it's comprised of other water agencies, including some west-side irrigation districts, and contractors, current CVP water contractors as well.
Is the county of Fresno going to be a member?
I cannot speak for the. I cannot speak for the county at this time.
Don't they have a pretty big interest in future water allocations?
I think, I think all of us do in terms of the new Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and an interest in water, in surface water supply reliability, generating new surface water supplies. The county, you know, has a, I would say the county very much has an interest in it as well. Whether they will actually participate in the new authority that will take the lead in acquiring any state and federal funding, in the further development of how the design of the facility could be completed and then constructed and operated later, I can't speak for their involvement in that.
So as I understand...
Just to help, this JPA does have supervisors from Madera County, Fresno County, and Kings that I know of. It's the one that's being headed up by Mario Santoyo. So it's, it's, it's been operating...
Actually, this is the successor group.
Oh, it's the successor to that?
Right. So Mario Santoyo's group, which is the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, took the lead in the Prop 1 application to acquire funding, state funding for the project. That application has been completed, and there's a transition here to the new temperance flat authority that would be a lead agency that would carry this effort forward, including design, construction, operation.
It's, I think it's all the same players, though.
Pretty much, yeah.
I'm not comfortable giving $250,000 towards this effort without having the county of Fresno have skin in the game. So if this was to move forward today, I would like a contingent on the county of Fresno being an equal participant, if not, you know, double of what we do. Because they represent a million residents, we represent half a million. And I think we shouldn't go in alone at this with other water agencies.
Okay, so in the way our contract works, you know, we are a Class 1 contractor for up to 60,000 acre feet of water out of Milton Reservoir. Fresno Irrigation District is a Class 2 contractor. And our effort in this is a joint effort with the Fresno Irrigation District, with Fresno County very much a part of the North Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So they're very much a part of this whole effort. Whether they're an actual member of the authority, I think is a separate question.
But to clarify, is the county of Fresno contributing $250,000 towards this effort?
I don't know the answer to that question.
So, can I jump in, Council President?
Yes.
Just to follow up, I think I'd like to have further discussion on this in terms of like a complete presentation, how all the different components, I think even for the benefit of the new, my new colleagues, I think it's important for us to understand. And what are some of the direct benefits? I'd like for us to be able to flush that out. So I would like to actually motion to table this and bring it, you know, in a next meeting where we can go through a full presentation or have separate meetings to really understand. I think it is important that Fresno, that Fresno County is at the table with financial support. We would all benefit from the building of it. But I think that unless we can show that for some, you know, extraordinary circumstances, we would get, you know, first dibs or more water out of the investment, I'd really like to know. And I know that you guys put that there's no fiscal impact to general fund, which is awesome. But the dollars that you guys are using are to the Water Enterprise Fund. And we know that as much as we can save, it'll save at the end our ratepayers. So I want to make sure that we're wisely using the monies that we have within the enterprise fund so that we are not having to go back to our ratepayers and have them pay more.
Sure.
So if that's okay with my colleagues?
Member, I think that's a great idea, actually. Mike, you kind of have heard a couple of the comments. Maybe next time, two weeks from now, when we reconvene, we could have a member speak on behalf of Fresno County, either from the CAO's office or one of the supervisors. I mean, that's going to be the question that's going to be asked two weeks from now.
Yeah, we can, we can invite them, I guess, to come speak on their behalf.
Okay.
We can reach out to them.
All right, and I'll try, I'll try and work on that as well. So I, I know in the past, all those counties that I mentioned have been heavily involved, and the city of Fresno's not been directly involved. But we have sponsored a couple of Fresno County cities to be at the table.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to do that. I mean, if, you know, if we would have invited them here today if we knew that was important to the, to the discussion. So, yeah, we can reach out to them and, and see if we can get him, them here to this meeting.
Yeah, we might even ask for the chair of that authority. Has the chair been established yet of that, of this? Is it still going to be Mario?
Well, this is part of establishing that authority.
Okay.
So there is a transition group under an MOU right now that is now forming the authority, development of bylaws. And so with Fresno joining, we would be another member of that group.
Okay.
And so to be clear, the $250,000 over three years is, is money that would be contributed to the operation of the authority as we move through this process. Right now, the initial contribution is about $15,000 for operational expenses. You know, our proportional share of operational expenses for the next six months, anticipating that in the event the authority does continue to move forward, there would be additional operational expenses. In terms of the cost of the actual dam, how much storage, how much additional water supply, those are all part of study, ongoing technical studies and efforts to determine the viability of the project and whether it makes sense to move that initiative forward.
And Mr. Carbasi, just closing comments. You know, water is probably the most important natural resource we have in the valley. It determines growth, it determines access to clean water for residents. We need to understand the full implications of us paying $250,000 on this endeavor, and who also is willing to go in with this financially and not just our ratepayers. So I like to understand the full picture, and I think we can do that in a consent item.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Chavez, you had a quick comment?
Thank you, President Brandow. I mean, I understand what this is about. We've had this conversation for, but I'm going to be respectful and not a professional courtesy for our new colleagues so they can have an opportunity. But I also want us to be prepared that, you know, Fresno County is an independent government agency, and they have so discretion whether they want to be a part of something. So I just want us to be clear about what this decision means. This might mean that we join it without them. The county does a lot of things that we don't necessarily support or want to be a part of. But I just want us to be clear and on the same pace that we might have to do this on our own. Thanks.
All right, Mike, when we bring that back, let's not put it on the consent calendar. Let's just put it on general admin. The next item, item 1G, Councilman Capriolio, you pulled that item.
I sure did. And with great joy and delight, Nancy Trumbly, would you please come forward to the microphone? And what item 1G is, it's a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to IBank for financing the capital improvement project at District 4's Fresno-Yosemite International Airport. And Nancy is an intricate part. She is the, want to get this correct, the Chief Deputy Executive Director. And it's welcome to Fresno. It's so good to see you. We just met in the back, and it was a great conversation. And I, I wanted to thank my team from the airport. You guys are fantastic as well. And so what we're talking about here is an application to receive a loan from the IBank for $35 million toward the improvement of the airport. Nancy, tell us how that came about and what your role is in the process.
Thank you. How it came about was the airport approached IBank, and let me start with, IBank is a state agency. So I'm here from Sacramento. And our state agency at IBank is the California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank. And we make loans to municipalities. So when Fresno approached us with the idea of, you know, building the parking structure and also some infrastructures needs that they had for the airport itself, we were thrilled. Fresno is near and dear to my heart. I couldn't think of a better place to be on Valentine's Day than Fresno. My actual banking career started here. I, I lived in Fresno, and I might be dating myself, but worked for Crocker Bank and also guarantee savings. So I love Fresno. We're really happy to be able to help. The way our state agency raises funds is we issue bonds to the public market. And the funds that we get from the bonds, we use to make loans to municipalities, schools, hospitals, universities. And we normally only lend about $25 million per project. But for Fresno, we, you know, found such value in the project that we're willing to ask our board to lend $35 million. We're confident that that will be approved on February 27th. And we're just thrilled and happy to be able to be a part of it.
Nancy, the, can you tell me about the terms of this $35 million loan?
Certainly. When we issue bonds to the market, we, you know, we've received a AAA rating from all three of the rating agencies. And that allows us to pass that savings on to our borrowers. So we have offered an amazing rate of 3.15%, which the airport tells me if they were to do a bond, it would cost considerably more. And I think the figure of savings was in the range of about $4 million or more. So we offer a 30-year term on that loan, and with the possibility of making another loan at another time as well.
That is fantastic. And we've discussed the economic impact on our community. I think the Fresno-Yosemite International Airport is ready to explode, and this expansion will help accommodate that. And this team that's up here in the front row have done such a great job. And Kevin Campbell here today, he's, he's back at Quebec City trying to get more airlines to come to Fresno. And so we're, we're just doing a great job. And I think you were fairly impressed, I was watching you when we had our ceremonial. So this, this city is really, really enthusiastic. We love each other, we do great things together, and we want to welcome you to our family. And I look forward to seeing you in Sacramento the 27th, and thanks for everything you do. It's fantastic. And I'm sure somebody is already your Valentine. Otherwise, I asked you to be my Valentine for, for the special occasion today. And it's fantastic. As I said, 3.15 for $35 million unheard of. And we thank you for your faith and trust in Fresno. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember, is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Capriolio, a second by Councilmember Soria. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Now, we're going to hear consent item 1D. Councilman Arias, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you, Council President Brandow. I just wanted to make a note that I had the opportunity to meet with the Building Association this week to discuss the item and express some of my reservations, specifically around the fact that we've just approved a money-back guarantee that has significant staffing implications upstairs. And so the Building Association seems confident that staff will be able to process this change in our policies as well as the money-back guarantee. So I just want to make sure that staff is aware of that. And if they're still comfortable moving forward, then they do so, you know, clearly at their risk and the industry's risk. Because this is a significant change to our, the way we do business when it comes to approving projects that haven't been yet annexed. So with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve. So I want to make sure it's on the record. Second.
Do you still want a presentation from Public Works? Not necessarily. All right, council members? Would anybody in the public like to address this item? If so, you can please come forward, and we'll let you speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, and members of the council. Mike Brandini representing the Building Industry Association. As Councilmember Arias indicated, the, we met with him and went over and tried to, not tried to, I believe we did, based on his motion, addressed his concerns regarding this process. And this is at risk on the developer. This has nothing to do with the money-back guarantee timeline because this is at risk. The process is, is, doesn't really, I guess, when you make an application, you go at risk. It's not, it's not our intent to have this affect the money-back guarantee. So whatever rules are in that are separate and apart from this at-risk process. But this allows the, a builder to choose to go ahead once the application at LAFCO has been approved and the facilities, plans, and specifications have been at least initially reviewed by the city, and the city has no major concerns. So they can then get ahead of the, of the curve in getting their infrastructure started, which could save three or four months in their construction process. And that's why we, but it's voluntary and part of the builder, so the builder has to take the risk.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members of the public like to address this item? If not, we have a motion from Councilmember Arias and a second from Councilmember Soria. Screen is clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0 with Councilman Capriolio absent. Next, we have item 1J. And Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Staff.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Rob Thaler for the retirement office.
Mr. Thaler, just a quick question. I was reading through this report. I was asking Jane about it. When they allude to the systems gross of fees that are returned, those are the fees that are actually paid to the custodian, the people who are managing all of our assets?
Correct.
Okay. And it said, I'm reading that it's about 8.87%. Typically about 8% for the management of those fees. That's the standard, because it seems, seems kind of high to...
Oh.
So that's what I was just curious about.
Okay, it, it seems expensive, except for the fact that it is actually within averages. So we actually look at the CEM benchmarking studies.
Can you speak to, closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Certainly. We do examine those. Our investment advisor looks at those. The industry standards are well within the ranges that we're paying. We can provide more details on those if you'd like to see them.
Just curious, because I've, I've seen, you know, large accounts, not with this level of money, but millions of dollars, and it didn't seem like it was about 8%. It actually seemed like it was about 5%. But I'm not in this arena, so it may, it may actually be 7, 8%, 9% that you get. That's the standard.
May I ask a point of clarification? Are you asking if the fees we're paying are 8%?
The management, that's what I'm asking.
No, the, the fees we're paying are not 8%.
The fees were what?
The fees that we are paying are not 8%.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about.
Okay, so I'll get an exact number, but it's in basis points, so it's much less than 1%.
Okay, so then the, that's what I'm asking about. This gross of fees, and it alludes to 8.87%. I'm on the...
That's the return on investment in gross...
That's what I'm asking you to clarify, if you would.
Certainly, the net of fee would be less, sorry, the gross of fee is the actual investment return, then less the payment to the management. Do you have those numbers at all? So we can provide those numbers for you, but it would be a few basis points. I believe we average somewhere around 50 basis points or half a percent.
Okay.
So the net of fee return would be some, still north of 8%. But we don't pay 8% in management fees.
That's what I was asking about.
My apologies for misunderstanding the question.
No problem. Okay, thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Make a motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to go out to the public. Any members of the public like to address this item? I don't see any. In that case, we have a motion from Councilman Brettafeld, a second one from Councilman Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, right. That motion passes 6-0 with Councilman Arias absent. Now, we have item 1A. Councilmember Soria, I believe you pulled item 1A.
Good morning. Shelby, Public Works Department. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi, good morning, Shelby. And we did ask about the projects. I know that you guys listed them on the staff report. But, so just a couple of questions, and I don't know if you or Scott, you know, are the most appropriate person to answer the question. So how do we go about in picking what projects we're doing?
So the projects selected for this round, the first step is always to review the guidelines for the grant. In this case, the projects that are eligible are very limited to planning, capital improvements, or fee waivers to incentivize development. The next step is to look at adopted plans for different communities that are going to be eligible for the grant. And then from there, projects that meet the requirements are selected and routed to city manager's office for review.
Okay. And from the four that we are submitting, that doesn't mean that they will all be funded?
Well, my hope is that they will. I'm doing my best, but... But there's no guarantee in any grant project. They are competitive process. The total pot available is 2 million. We are asking for a total of 1.5 million. Last round, our project scored a 90 out of 100, which exceeded, it was the top ranking project. So our intent is to submit competitive applications and then hope for the best.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to kind of understand your process. So that clears up the questions that I had. I appreciate it and happy to support. I know that in my district, we have a Venice and all of transit stopper configuration, which is going to be key to that area. So I appreciate the work on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I had one question.
Sure.
Excuse me, Councilman Asparza. So we have a motion from Councilmember Soria, a second from Councilman Chavez, and Councilman Arias, you punched up.
It would just be helpful in the future if you could indicate what the local match source is going to be on the agenda items. And then also in the agenda item include the cost of the project that you're applying for, just for future reference. Makes it easier for us not to bug you guys.
Sure. Happy to do that.
And in the future, I know you listed off the districts on the, on the agenda, 1, 3, 5, and 7. I was confused at first when I looked at the project list here. So when you say District 7, you're talking, you're referring to the Kingscane Transit Connectivity Plan, correct?
Yes, there's a small portion of your district that is included in that project area.
Okay, I haven't seen the actual project, but I assume probably kind of the north side of the district. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Shelby. I'm going to go out to the public really quick. Any members of the public like to comment on this last pulled consent item? I don't see any. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes 7-0. All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the scheduled hearings and matters. And we have a 10:00 AM item, a hearing to obtain public comments regarding the implementation of proposed substantial amendment number 2018-01. And that's from the Department of Resource and Management Department.
Good morning. Kelly Furtado with DARM. Today I'm representing the Housing and Community Development Division. And as you mentioned, today is the 10:00 AM public hearing to obtain the public comments regarding the substantial amendment and the amount of $2.25 million. This morning, the recommendation is that the city council conduct that public hearing to obtain the views and comments from the members of the public. But prior to that, I'd like to just provide a brief update specifically regarding some of the public comment and the Housing and Community Development Commission meeting that occurred last night. While there were no public comments received during the 30-day public comment period that ended in January, last night at the HCDC, we had a total of five speakers coming to speak on this topic. Four of them were very adamant and passionate about asking the city and the HCDC last night not to consider defunding parks projects through the substantial amendment process. They spoke in length with our commissioners at the HCDC about the value that parks add to quality neighborhoods. And clearly that's something that we are all very supportive of. And they also spoke in recognition that they understand the value of affordable senior housing and did not want to see the projects versus one another, but understood the need for both. And while they recognized that there was a need for moving timely, again, those four individuals that spoke against the substantial amendment were specifically speaking against the defunding parks projects portion of it. One of the speakers was actually representing the housing project that was, is proposed to be utilizing the funds in the reprogramming. And again, that individual spoke in support of the parks and the need for infrastructure and answered some of the commissioners' questions about should the substantial amendment not be approved, that it would put the jeopardy, the project of theirs, the housing of affordable senior housing in jeopardy because they also have some timeliness matters that they need to address. So those were the public comments. And the body, the Housing and Community Development Commission, had many questions and considered this very thoughtfully. And a split vote of four to two, they did recommend that the city council approve the substantial amendment when it comes back to this body on the 28th of February. However, they did struggle with the public comments received from individuals about the concern, the potential risk of the parks projects. And while they understood that those parks projects were not being canceled, that there could be some risk of them not getting sufficient funding in the next cycle of the annual action planning process. So I just wanted to, that almost concludes my comments. I wanted to make sure this body is aware that the item will come back on February the 28th for the actual substantial amendment. Today again is just a public hearing to hear input from the community. And I wanted to let you know that we've taken very seriously comments raised by the council and also heard last night, both from our housing commissioners, but also from the members of the public. And so my office and the administration have been working overnight. And we believe that we, we may have with Councilmember Chavez's involvement got a solution that may help alleviate some of these concerns about the potential delay of funding in the parks projects. And so, Council President, if you would, if it would be appropriate at this time, if I could conclude my comments and ask Councilmember Chavez to elaborate on that potential solution before the public hearing.
Thank you, Kelly.
Prior to getting to the solution, I want to understand the problem. So if the council would allow us to ask questions on how we got here.
Miguel, I'm going to, excuse me, Councilman Arias. She's asking as part of her presentation to include Councilman Chavez. So I'm going to, he was in a meeting last night, so I'm going to let him be a part of her presentation. And then it's wide open for any questions you have.
Yeah, I want to, I want to address this upfront because it is a project in my district. And, you know, and I received a number of calls from folks in the community about what this looks like for Southwest, for Southeast Fresno, and for the city as a whole. And some of the comments that were made to me were 100% correct. You know, especially when we consider that we haven't invested in parks for a very long time in the city of Fresno. Let's not tippy-toe around that, that idea because we know that that's been the case. We have over $149 million in needs across the city for our parks department. And so I wanted to present an option and I want to thank Kelly for working with me on a couple of the, of the numbers, you know, and really have this as an option. And we're going to let the public speak, but I want to make sure that they're clear on what the will of this council will be and especially on, on our side. So, you know, Kelly, I, I want, she want to have an option to direct staff to actually remove the three parks projects from that and fully fund them. And I want that in writing because I share Councilmember Arias's concern with not investing in those parks. And I want that funded for this year and for next year as well. I want to use the remaining DPW LED projects as a source of funds to make up some of the, some of the difference. And then also, you know, for my project that I have in, on Orange and Butler, I want to actually use that as a source of funding because it is something that is important for our community and include that for next year. I don't think there's a problem in waiting a little bit to float that project for, for the next year. But I want to make sure that the community understands that we're, we're not going to cut parks. We're not going to do that. I'm certainly not comfortable with that. And I share the concerns that, that my colleague Arias had. And so with that, I just want to put that out there as an option on, on bringing that back for the council to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chavez.
But let's, let's hear from the community because I think that's important. And I agree with Councilmember Arias that we should let them speak and, and give their input for us.
Yeah, but if a councilman punches up, I'm going to take, I'm going to take their comments and we will hear from the community. So Councilman Arias, did you? Okay. All right, we will now listen to the community. Any members of the public like to address this item? I want to remind you as you're coming forward that we're not actually going to vote on this item today. It's for introduction. But you've heard the issues being discussed and please state your name and you get three minutes. Good morning, Preston.
Preston Prince, CEO of the Fresno Housing Authority, 1331 Fulton Street in Fresno. I love it when you're talking about housing, so how could I not come here and, and share a few words with you? We have a housing crisis in Fresno and we have it throughout California. It might be a little bit different when you look at some of the high-cost areas of San Francisco or LA, but our housing issues are very severe, particularly for low-income families. 80 to 90% of our families are extremely rent burden. On average, they're paying 73% of their income towards rents, towards shelter. They are not able to spend those other dollars on important issues of health or energy, utilities, or things for their kids' education. So this is a housing crisis. I did want to give out this one report that we do every year for the council members. We do this in partnership with the California Housing Partnership Commission. And it looks at the needs in Fresno and also some ideas. And if you go to the last page, one of our local recommendations is to identify and approve multiple local revenue sources for affordable housing and place proceeds in an affordable housing trust fund. So this amendment is not going to necessarily put money into, into a trust fund, but is doing what we need to do. We need to look at how can the local communities support affordable housing. In Fresno, I saw this, I'm going to find the source and get it to you. We spend about $6 per capita on affordable housing in Fresno. That's compared to $70, $80 per capita in other cities like LA, San Francisco, and San Jose. We are not going to be able to address our housing crisis if there's not an investment at the local level for affordable housing. So I am here to say that this amendment, I, I have to tell you, I am not envious of you all right now. What a hard conversation you're having, but it's what you're supposed to be talking about. I'm a little sad that Kelly talked about five people coming up. This should be a conversation as important as homelessness. That brings out hundreds of people that we talk about, how is this community going to respond to the housing crisis? But I am here to say that I do support the idea of using CDBG funds for affordable housing. We need more local resources and that I really support, as you're talking about a more kind of transparent, thoughtful process, looking at how to use these scarce funds that we want to be at the table and having that conversation with you about how to invest in affordable housing. So I just wanted to say that. I have an extra copy for the clerk. I had to keep mine just in case. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Any other members of the public like to address this item?
Good morning, council. My name is Gummeldees Cor and I am the resident of 93722 zip code. And I'm here in support to the park and I really appreciate the new solution that's been able to come to the table. As we, most of us know that west of 99, there's a park desert out there and the quality of life is very much dependent on our green spaces that we provide to our children. And I'm particularly attached to just ones in Colorado Park, which is on the Clinton and Brawley area, which is one of the three parks that is recommended to be defunded. So I really appreciate the solution that has come up overnight. I was one of the members that was able to speak last night and, you know, just quoting my colleague from last night really quickly, that our budgets do reflect our values and our values need to be in our park. And we're really, it's a disservice to our children and our youth when we're not providing them safe places to, you know, go after school, enjoy their youth, enjoy their childhood. So really appreciate this solution that has been able to come up and thank you for that. Thank you.
You. Any other members of the public?
Good morning. My name is Debbie Darden. I stand before you chair as the Golden West Side Planning Committee, also Bay PAC member. My address, 891 West Kearney Boulevard. I'm just coming before you to reiterate some of the things that constantly takes place with projects that are put on hand. Those dollars are designated to projects that are listed. That's what they were given for. One of the things that the city has history of doing is taking those money and redirecting them somewhere else. So I'm in support of the parks, but I'm also in support of all the other projects to which those dollars were allocated. If there's another source that's going to come in and step in and help in some of those areas, then use those monies for other things to which they're still stemmed for. So my thing of it is, is support it to stop taking dollars where they are already allocated to reuse them somewhere else. Things that are set up that you got this money for, they're designated that for a reason. Those particular projects need those funding. So I ask that you support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other members of the public like to address this item?
Good morning. Bob Mitchell, Golden West Side Planning Committee. I'm somewhat puzzled as to how we arrived at this point in time as it relates to the funds that are now being considered for the housing project. I too feel that we have a very, very serious problem in having affordable housing for those within our community. But we've had a very serious problem for a long time as it relates to parks for other areas of the city, which have been long, long left behind. The funds were there to do work to help improve those conditions. A healthy community requires good, healthy parks. It also requires that there are housing for those who cannot afford housing. I suggest that we find a way that it's not either/or, but both, but not to take funds from the parks, which have been left behind and certainly are deserving of being utilized and brought up to par for the citizens of our community. You do have a hard task before you, but keep that in mind when you decide how to vote. The parks are a part of every community. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Bob. Any other members of the public like to address this item? Okay, I don't see anybody stepping forward. So we're going to come back up to the dais and Councilman Arias.
Thank you. As you can imagine, this has been a very frustrating two weeks. So to help us understand how we got here, on January 29th, Councilmember Soria, Councilmember Capriolio and I met with staff to understand how they reached this recommendation. At that time, I requested a full scope of the Dicky Youth, JSK, and Pink White projects that staff was recommending the funding be eliminated and the reasons why they were delayed. 15 days later, I still haven't received that explanation. We don't know what the scope of the projects are in each of those parks. We don't know the reason why they're being delayed. And we don't know how we got here, essentially. What we do know is that $750,000 designated for parks is being recommended to be moved into another project, as worthy as that project is to disservice to the residents and to the promises that were made by the previous council. Equally infuriating is that just two weeks ago, this council took action to put an additional million dollars into parks. Two weeks later, the administration is recommending that we take away nearly a million dollars from parks. The council seems to be taking one step forward and the administration takes us one step back. It leads me to believe that we have to ask a basic question. Does the administration really not want to maintain our parks? Does the administration not really understand what poorly maintained, broken parks do to a neighborhood? Or do they simply don't care? So one of the parks that the administration is recommending that the funding be eliminated is Dicky Youth. And I'll read to you a couple of the incidents that we've had there. They discovered six grams of crystal meth and two small baggies of black heroin being sold. On the same day, surveillance at the playground observed several hand-to-hand transactions of people purchasing crystal meth. Two days later, they conducted surveillance again on individuals gambling and lottery in the park. There were several empty baggies of crystal meth. The same day, observed narcotics users and wanted subject in probation leaving the area. They were subsequently arrested for having and selling drugs on the park. Some folks in this building believe that we can wait another year before we fix that park. What they don't understand is that in that time, these parks are taken over by drugs, gangs, and every single thing that we don't want our kids to be around. We are literally putting the lives of our kids at risk because we refuse to fix broken parks that lead to victimization of our kids. One of the other parks that they're recommending that we wait another year for, I've had kids molested in those restrooms because the city takes them a while, months to replace a lightbulb because they're stretched thin. This is in no way how we should be doing business in this city. The reason you only had five... The reason you only had five people at the commission meeting is because people weren't even aware that the city was making this recommendation. I assure you that if we would have notified the residents of JSK, of Fink White, and of Dickey Youth, that room and these chambers would be full of folks trying to understand why it is that we're breaking promises. So far, what we've heard is halfway commitments to make these parks whole next year. That's not good enough. You took the money from this budget cycle, you put it back in this budget cycle. I doubt that the police chief, the fire chief, or any department head would be okay with their coffers being raided this year and being promised that they would be made whole the following year. It's not the way we should be doing city business, and it is extremely upsetting not to have basic questions answered by staff on how we got here, nor what our plan is to make those parks whole. I have a feeling that if this were our park, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And in the day that we celebrate Black History Month, in the day that we celebrate, you know, supporting blue, we seem to completely be ignorant to the fact that we're making police officers' jobs harder, and we are making the lives of kids of color worse in our city by the actions that are on this agenda. So I do want to thank Councilmember Chavez for bringing forward options. As you can imagine, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to settle for a commitment anymore. This money was committed and promised in 2018, and 2019 is being recommended to be eliminated. Commitments in this building don't seem to hold up. So unless I see something in writing that guarantees that this money will be replaced in this budget cycle, I will not support the relocation of these funds.
Are you done? Councilmember Soria.
Thank you. Excuse me. I want to thank the folks that were here to speak on this issue. And so, you know, it's tough to have a discussion when you have two great issues and great projects that are pitted against each other. I think what it highlights is that we do have a serious housing crisis, and we need to really highlight that. One of the things that I will be working on with a couple of my colleagues is to declare a housing crisis, because that's where the city of Fresno is. I think today, what we are seeing with the fact that we don't have enough local matching dollars to be able to invest for these types of projects, like the senior housing project that will be happening in District 5, is evident that we have a problem before us. But one of the other things, you know, I feel very similar to what Councilmember Arias just mentioned about the frustration, time and time again. And I know I sat with staff two weeks ago, as was mentioned, and I'm still to really get the full understanding as to the problem. I voted on this project because I believe in affordable housing and the need that we need to invest in this type of, in these types of developments. I think that the development that is before us, or asking for the dollars, is a great development. Part of that project, when it came before the council, we had committed that we would do a Section 108 loan. When I asked, why didn't that happen? I heard excuses. I heard excuses that we didn't have the staff capacity. And, you know, if we knew we didn't have the staff capacity, why did we make those commitments? Because I was under the impression that when this project came forward with that type of funding source, that we were going to be able to meet those deadlines. Unfortunately, today, the council is put in a tough position. Yes, I appreciate Councilmember Chavez coming up with an alternative, but I think that we need to highlight the problems that are existing, that we need to figure out how we are going to fix those. We know that our city has been under microscope from the feds when it comes to how we've utilized CDBG dollars. And so it doesn't make me feel good when I'm being told that all these other projects are going to be delayed, and that they would be, you know, potentially funded in the following year. It doesn't make me feel good because I think that the promises that we're making on an annual basis are not being met, specifically to the residents that we owe it to, to those residents that have the greatest need in those various neighborhoods. So I'm really concerned about how we're going about in addressing this issue. I would also note that I think a couple weeks ago, this council voted to sell a couple parking lots. I would submit to this council that if we're serious about affordable housing, let's commit those dollars to the additional million dollars that we have to make sure that these types of projects are built. That's where those dollars should be invested in. So I would submit this council, and, you know, I look forward to bringing, to coming forward with a solution to address some of the housing issues, potentially looking at a housing trust fund, where we can put those dollars and leverage these dollars out, because we do have a serious problem. But again, I am concerned about how we're, how we are going about in the process. I'm also a little concerned about who is representative, represented in the HCDC. I would submit to our administration, and I hope that we look at making sure that there is a true representation of the city of Fresno when it comes to this committee. This committee is extremely important because they are the ones that give recommendations to this council as to how these dollars are going to be spent in some of the poorest neighborhoods in the city of Fresno. So, you know, I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say, but I am very concerned about what is happening within our departments. I want to see us, you know, make some strides forward to address affordable housing within the city of Fresno, and that the city of Fresno commits significant investments so that we are able to leverage those dollars, so that these actual projects get done in a timely fashion, because we are in a crisis. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
No, I 100% agree with the comments that my colleagues said, and I just want to make sure that we're clear, Kelly, when we come back, that that needs to be in writing, the fact that we are not touching the park money for that area. And that's one of the things that I was not comfortable with. I was not comfortable, because as many of you know, you know, I represent southeast, but I also lived in southwest. I lived on Elm and Jensen there, right, but where it used to be the U. Some of you know what the U is like, and now that Gaston's there, you know, there's been additional investments in that community. And so I don't even want the perception to exist that this body up here does not value and support southwest Fresno or District 3. And, you know, I think, I think we've shown a step in the right direction, you know, with what we've done with Darling and trying to fix that, the $70 million that's going to District 3. Some of you know that there are areas of my neighborhood and other council members, District 7, 1, that could have used some of that money. We say, you know what? No, we're not going to do that this time. That community has been historically left behind, and we're going to invest those dollars in that area. And I'm 100% supporting that. The downtown improvements that we've made, the $10 million that we've had with infrastructure investments in that area. I hope the community knows and understands, and I mention those just as examples of the investment that's gone on. We've got ways to go. We know that southwest still needs additional investments, and I don't want the perception to exist that anybody on this body does not want to invest in those communities. So Kelly, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that when we bring that option back for consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember, I'll go back to my office, revise the staff report and the substantial amendment to reflect your comments, and that'll be done by the end of the day, so that when you, as a body, consider it on the 28th, you'll have information in writing.
Councilmember Esparza.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I want to read directly from the HUD website and just their brief description of what a community development block grant program is. So the CDBG program is a flexible program that provides communities with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs. You know, almost ambiguous, but the key words there being flexible, unique. First off, I want to say I appreciate the advocacy efforts on behalf of Councilmember Chavez and his housing. I appreciate the advocacy efforts on behalf of Councilmember Arias and our parks. But, you know, I think what we presented here today with the timeline of, deadline of May 1st, and the allocation of these dollars, is just another example of zero-sum policy that pits, you know, one project against the other and forces us as council to have tough conversations on how to spend these dollars. You know, they mentioned parks, we mentioned housing, I can mention infrastructure, all right? And these dollars are meant for the communities that are most in need of them, and they come in different forms. You know, I would propose actually that we, after hearing the different concerns, that we put together a couple of different subcommittees. You know, one pertaining to housing, a few of us might join there, and that might be a bit of a longer-term project, maybe short-term, maybe long-term. But another subcommittee on really hammering out the allocation of these CDBG funds. And I'm happy to serve on that committee, and two of my colleagues, I think Councilmember Chavez would be very interested in serving with me as well. But I want to put that out there. But I think that committee, that's more of a short-term, coming back here on the 28th, making sure we do the right thing with these, with these funds that we're discussing right now.
Sorry, I just had one thing, maybe two things that I wanted to add. One, in light of what is happening, I think that it's appropriate for us to ask that this council receives minimumally on an, biannually, a report on the status of these projects, because somehow, somewhere, there was a snag in meeting timelines. And we need accountability. Staff needs to be accountable for not meeting the deadlines that they promised the council when we first allocated. So I would submit to the administration that we do have these at minimum twice a year to see where the projects are at. Because I don't want to be in a situation where two years from now, we are back at, you know, where we're at today. You know, it's, to me, it was a little bit interesting to hear that there was, you know, 2. whatever million to be reallocated for a housing development, when I clearly remember working with Councilmember Capriolio, trying to shepherd his community center through, and we are being told, oh, there's no CDBG dollars available in the last couple of years. Everything has been allocated. And what surprises me is that low and behold, you know, a year later, we're in this situation where we're reallocating, we're reprioritizing, and we have kind of left District 4 over here hanging, when he has been working really hard and trying to get this community center going. I know it, I know it's still in the process, but it's taking a long time. And these funds could have also helped with that, if we're talking about parks and investing in those types of resources. So it's just, to me, it's troubling, because I feel like we're not getting the information. There's really, it seems like a lack of transparency and a lack of accountability.
Yeah, I appreciate the entire dialogue. Obviously, this project in Councilmember Chavez's district is an important one and a good one. But I think Councilmember Arias asked a question that I don't think I've heard an answer, and I'm not obviously involved in this, is how did we get here? How did money that was supposed to be allocated for parks, Dickey Youth Development Center and other places be reprogrammed? What's the justification for that? Do you have an answer? Staff?
So I would probably want to defer to a Parks member to answer specifics about the projects, but they're just, they're delayed in implementation. So in the 2018 year, the Parks Department was awarded, I want to say, $2.3 million over 12 different projects. And while they have worked to begin the environmental process, the review process, getting our authorization to use the grant funds, and getting all the documentation prepared, the procurement done, many of those projects are moving along. These just happened to be three that they did not feel were going to be utilizing funds during this program year, and so that's why the intention was to delay funding them to next year, the majority of them. So they still were going to maintain some funding under the prior scenario, so they could continue their work in this year. But I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to the project management details of each of those parks.
Kelly, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but we got our allocation late this year, correct?
Yeah, we were awarded the money probably in October.
So that's what, we're five months now past then?
Right, right. And I mean, a lot of the year is spent in environmental, getting agreements done, that type of thing. And then this, and again, Park staff could probably speak to it more, but the procurement, the bidding, the staffing capacity of their own, I know that they just, within, I believe, the last 30 days, hired a project manager
Correct.
to specifically handle the capital management of some of the Parks projects.
Yeah, but who's made, who made that decision to move money away from there towards this project? I mean, you're talking Parks, it sounds very, you know, in the clouds. Who's making these decisions? And why are councilmembers not being consulted on these things?
So every quarter, I prepare a giant spreadsheet of all the projects that we still have active. Some of those go back several years, and it's tracked from my division, the Housing and Community Development Division, on a monetary basis, so that we can anticipate meeting our timeliness test for HUD. So in December, whenever we put our most recent information together, we had, I'm going to say, $1.9 million worth of projects that were completed, and there were salary savings or other types of project savings, and we had another, and we had a need to reprogram that. We also had a need to try to align that with the affordable housing project that was in need. And our timelines all meshed up. We all kind of need this to happen by May. And so that left, the $1.9 million that we had in other funding, that was kind of normal reprogramming, there was a gap of about, of a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, so Kelly, you made the decision?
I made a recommendation. I made several recommendations with the administration, and we came to the conclusion that the Parks projects could not implement their programs this calendar year, and that there would be no harm in pushing those projects off to year two and funding them in year two, because they did not have the ability to start implementing those projects.
But Councilman Arias says that there is a problem in putting it off. And am I right in what you're saying?
Parks will be unable to complete those projects within the next few months. So there's, and again, I don't want to speak on behalf of Parks, but there, it was an agreed-upon decision.
Agreed upon by you and Parks, not with councilmembers?
And the mayor's office, no, correct. It was not agreed on with councilmembers. And HUD requires that we do a public participation process. So we put our recommendations out there. We have a 30-day public review process, and we share that with the council, we share that with our public, we have that email list of 500. We publish it in two newspapers, we have a radio station read it. We try to put as much out there as possible to get that input, and this is actually the input we need and want, and that's how we adjust these plans and come back to the council ultimately to get decisions. And so as the Councilmember Chavez mentioned, taking the Parks projects off is an option, and he can, basically, he's recommended substituting it with another project in his own district that is also delayed. It's a public works project that is also delayed in implementing, because of the rain and procurement and delay in getting HUD's allocation this year.
I hear what you're saying, but it just sounds like councilmembers aren't involved.
Correct.
Their districts are clearly impacted. This park has been clearly adversely impacted. It would seem like there needs to be a much better process where councilmembers are involved. I understand the public process, that has to happen, it needs to happen, but decisions get made that have adverse impacts on neighborhoods and parks that have been ignored. And we all know that certain areas have been ignored. And so I share the sentiment expressed by my colleagues, and I think, you know, a better communication process needs to be a part of this, so this doesn't happen, and Parks people, or you, or the administration, make decisions that have adverse impacts on neighborhoods and parks, which is what's happened here, and that's why we're here today with this problem.
Councilmember.
I want to address that, if you don't mind. You know, I know that my assistant city manager, Jim Shad, has been working You know, I know that my Assistant City Manager Jim Shad has been working with a lot of your districts on kind of cleaning up the process and making sure that we have accountability because there has been some inefficiencies, if you will, between departments, et cetera. Kelly and the team met with administration to figure out the best set of projects to move forward that we could accomplish. And it's not that we are not, you know, mindful of the importance of the other parks, it's just that they're being put off for this year, the year to make sure that whenever we, that we can do them and accomplish them. As far as Councilmember Arias, I believe this is your third council meeting. And so we do our best whenever we transition between councilmembers to make sure the offices are updated. And so we will do a better job moving forward. I'm okay doing biannual updates for you all to make sure, and Jim will stay on this to make sure that the projects that we are bringing forward, we do our best to complete them, so.
Councilmember Arias.
A couple of things. And City Manager, I appreciate it, you're absolutely right, this is my third meeting, but it's not my first rodeo. So I know how it goes when we make commitments and we reprioritize based on what we believe is going to be the easiest task in front of us. I'd just like to remind us that two weeks ago, staff urged the council to expedite approving the million-dollar allocation for parks because they wanted to be able to use it in this budget cycle. At that time, if staff would have told us, we don't have the capacity to process all these funds this fiscal year, it would have been extremely helpful. And that million dollars could have been redirected somewhere else that could spend the money in a timely way. As we develop the path forward, what I'd like to see, which I still don't have, is a complete scope of the project for each park and a timeline for execution. Because simply allocating money without having understanding of when the work's supposed to be executed is going to be of no help to us and we'll find ourselves in this same space in six months.
You know, I'm going to interrupt and point out that the million dollars that you all took action on a couple of weeks ago was part of the budget motion in June. And so that was a good seven months that this body took to bring a set of projects forward. And so I could also point to you all about delay.
Absolutely fair. But those funds are for this budget cycle. So if we couldn't spend the money in this budget cycle, we should have been told that so we could reallocate that money somewhere else.
We should have been told in July what projects you wanted to move forward with so we would have had ample time this budget cycle to do everything that we could. So, you know, I don't want to have this discussion publicly, I mean...
Absolutely fair for the previous councilmember and the previous council. With that said, again, I want a complete scope of each park project and a timeline for execution and assurance is in writing that we're going to have this money in this budget cycle.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. And I appreciate City Manager Jim Shad in particular for working with me, trying to get through some of my projects. And I do appreciate that. But my concerns are multiple. One, this HCDC, seemingly all-powerful Public Comic Committee, I have no representation on that committee and I don't know if my colleagues do, but I think it would be advantageous and I thank those members for their service. It takes a lot of effort and energy to become part of the government process. But I think we should readjust the HCDC group to have seven members or eight, one from each council district and one from the mayor's office so we can be prized of these different projects and processes that we can participate and quite frankly, have an advocate from each of our districts for these funds. Next, I appreciate Member Esparza's comments. I'd like to be part of your committee, sir, if that's, if there's an application process or just my volunteer would be sufficient.
Hereby appointed.
I'd like to be involved with that. And then my last concern really, and I like the project, actually both projects, the senior housing as well as the Parks issue here, but my concern again was on the meeting that my colleagues addressed on January 29th. My recollection is that we really have no flexibility, that we really have to do what we have to do on the 2.2 million. And here we are today, all of a sudden, that flexibility that Member Esparza addressed is being utilized. And it's ironic that the inflexibility becomes flexible today and I don't know whether it will be tomorrow, but it's really ironic based upon that meeting we had. So I don't know if it'd be advantageous for me to make a motion along the lines of Member Chavez to have my community center budgeted forthwith for two years, et cetera. Is that what it takes to get things moving in the direction each of us as councilmembers do for our constituents? And I appreciate all your support on my community service facility, multi-generational. And I appreciate the bidestration for helping me with that as well, but I understand our concerns here and it's very, very interesting today. Thank you.
All right. Screen is clear. I've got a few thoughts then and we'll wrap this up. We're actually not voting on it today, so we'll get to have much of the same discussion at another time. So, Wilma, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, okay? See if I've got, I've been listening to everybody this morning. So CDBG established a list of projects. I was trying to remember, when were we presented that list of projects?
Kelly, you want to come up, please?
May 2018.
Okay, so almost, coming up on a year ago was the list of projects. Okay, that's good. And we have some discussion today about how that works and we've got two new councilmembers since then, so we need to reestablish how that works for this upcoming round. Then secondly, what I'm hearing is some projects are not ready in time to spend the money this year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, some councilmembers need proof of why that is happening. And so we need to address the proof as to why. It's not, apparently not good enough that you're telling us that, we need to know the proof of that when we come back. And then, so there is a recommendation to amend that list to add a housing project that is ready to spend the money on this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, this morning, when Councilman Chavez first had the microphone, he talked about a solution that would pull three of the projects that were on the CDBG list that were not ready to spend the money by this May and find an alternate way to fund them. Is that what I heard from you, Councilman? Three parks will be fully funded according to your solution. It needs to be, for two years, it needs to happen in writing so that you have proof that those three parks are going to be taken care of. It's really tough because this conversation's gone, a lot of debate all over the place, everything from how we list things on CDBG, how councilmembers can connect with that process throughout the year to make sure that those projects can be done. I see a lot of room for improvement there. But we have a solution on the table. I would like to just add that I too, I don't believe I have any of the projects listed in the CDBG, but I do hear from my constituents and I took a call from Nandip Singh and Gurdeep Singh Shergill connected with me on Facebook. And so I've been hearing from constituents that are concerned about these projects going away. I understand that these gentlemen, some of them have been contacted and told about the solution. I don't know if they're still holding as heavy of concern as they were yesterday, but we need to definitely interact if we're going to take two more weeks. The public needs to know that we have a solution and so that maybe people will be less worried. And if it comes in writing, which is the demand, that's even better. So that we can assure the people that are counting on these projects that they're going to get taken care of, a different pathway, through a different pot of money. And that's what I'm hearing today. And so those are my comments. I think it's time for us to have the debate and figure out what we're going to do this year for this solution and then work on the improvements that we all want for the next round of CDBG funding. And so those are my comments and I believe it's not an action item. So we all have a lot of questions that we're going to be working on in the next couple of weeks and so we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. I got one clap there, thank you. We're going to go to an appearance by Margaret Elaine Frey. Margaret, are you in, are you here today?
I don't think she's going to be here today.
Oh, okay, so that's been removed. Okay. Next then, we are going to go to the immigration discussion. What number is that again? 4A. We're going to go to 4A because we have a couple of people that need to hear that. And for the folks that are here for the 10:30 workshop, if we can get this discussion done before lunch, you're up next. If not, you'll be heard immediately after lunch. Item 4A is sponsored by Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Soria. It's an establishing of an immigrant affairs committee and that's what we're discussing right now.
Thank you, President Brando. This is something that we, Councilmember Soria and I have been working in, and Councilmember Baines before he left, had been working on this item for quite a bit of time. You know, it was really in collaboration with organizations that work with our immigrant community and, you know, this really came to head when I went on Mong TV, radio and a lot of folks had questions about the water fines, the rates, how to get their reimbursement back and such and such. And so we figured a way to create a medium, a place where the immigrant community could come and present ideas for the city of Fresno to help them better serve customers, residents in the neighborhoods. And so this really is the beginning of that process where they would have a committee made up of 15 individuals that work in the community with immigrant organizations and provide services on a daily basis. So, you know, what I really want to highlight is that, you know, this will be helpful for the council as they will bring recommendations for policy and it really is creating a place for them to have a conversation, bring a number of policies, conversations, suggestions. We will vet them both with legal parameters, with the budgetary constraints, and then bring them forward to the council for consideration. One of those things that I discussed was the water rate situation. The other piece is on improving our international airport and what that means for passengers that come through there. We know that that's a challenge as well. And then, more importantly, given our immigrant community a seat at the table to really come and have input, we know that they are business owners. I can tell you that 60% of the businesses on my Kings Canyon Ventura corridor are immigrants, the employee people, they pay taxes, but they often are underrepresented in especially civic-minded decisions. And I think this will be a great opportunity to bring folks into the Frey and tell them that Fresno welcomes their input, welcomes their feedback and that we'll take those under consideration. And so with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve. The committee?
Councilmember Soria, as co-sponsor, you're up next.
Yeah, so I'll keep my remarks short. I think most of the folks that are here and folks listening know that I have a deep passion for issues that impact our immigrant community. You know, part of my story is that I'm a daughter of farmworker immigrants that came here in the 1970s. And they came here with a dream and there are thousands of people that live in our city with that same story. And I think that over time, you know, the local municipalities like Fresno need to do a better job of not only welcoming our immigrant community, but also figuring out policies to better integrate our community. If the immigrant community thrives in the city of Fresno, the entire city of Fresno thrives. And so it is in that vein that I'm extremely proud that finally, five years in to the council, we finally seem to have the support to begin what is a first step because I only see the creation of the committee as a first step. I think there are a number of issues, subsidiary issues that need to be discussed. For example, language access policy. If you look at all the top 10 cities or at least the top five cities in the state of California, they have in some shape or form, some type of Office of Immigrant Affairs, some type of language access policy and a number of other resources where they partner with the private community, the community-based organizations to make sure that we're working together to integrate our community. You know, some of the statistics that are important to note is that here in the city of Fresno, 42% of households speak another language other than English. What that means is that if City Hall wants to be a place that is accessible and welcoming, that we need to make sure that we're providing the information in the languages that people speak in our community. I think that that's a responsibility that we have. I know that we've made great efforts. One of the first things that we did, I think, when I first came to the council, we actually translated the first few pages of the agenda, which previously was only in complete Spanish, English. Now we have a translation of the first few pages in Spanish and Mong, which was a big accomplishment, I think, for us to demonstrate again that we're moving forward to help encourage civic engagement, social integration and also political integration of our immigrant community. I also just wanted to note that making sure that we partner up with our educational institutions is going to be important to provide English-language resources to our community. I was at a workforce development convening last week where Amazon talked about the gap in the workforce and the lower-level line staff having the inability move up to managerial positions because they do not speak English well enough to be in a managerial position. That hinders many of our families from the opportunity to have economic mobility in our community. And we should be striving to build a middle class here in the city of Fresno. So I think that through this committee, we will be able to present, get advice on potential policies to be able to strengthen the role of the immigrant community and really work in partnerships. So with that, I want to thank everyone for their patience, for their commitment, for their advocacy. Again, this is, like I mentioned in the press conference yesterday, this is only the first baby step that we're taking. There's still a lot of work to be done. And I think that today is a good day because it signifies, not only Valentine's Day, right? I think that it's telling that we love our immigrant community because this country was founded by immigrants and that we're going to do, this council today is going to take steps forwards to ensure that we are appropriately integrating our immigrant community. So again, thank you for being here.
All right. Councilmembers, we have heard from the two co-sponsors. I have a number of cards from the public and yet a few of you are punched up. Would you, Councilman Capriolio, you're really up next, would you like to hear from the public first or make your comments now?
My comments now would be appropriate. And thank you, Council President. So in listening to the presentation here, I think first and foremost, we are all immigrants. My grandfather immigrated from northern Italy about 1912. My wife's parents and senior members of her family on both sides immigrated from Mexico. So I think we're a community of immigrants and I appreciate that totally, especially since I wouldn't be here without that. So I really, really appreciate that. So my concern is we're restricting this to a particular aspect of the population when the entire population, at least in my district, has issues with the water fines, the rates, how do you make those situations understandable and how we resolve those. So I was going to offer to my colleagues a friendly amendment rather than, say, issues related to immigrants, it really should be broadened to residents, all residents. All residents should have a voice on these issues to the council. So I would ask that that be done if possible. And we've addressed the language issues throughout our community in multiple ways. I think through DMV, there are 19 languages they publish in order to communicate with all the people of our fantastic state. So the second thing I was concerned with is there are 15 members to the committee and I think the mayor, who should have a direct line of communication, should also be able to appoint maybe two members to the committee as well. So I think it would be more open to everyone in our community if we changed our... if we changed the, or added the word immigrants and residents of the city of Fresno to the committee. Then we have a broader scope, and more people can get involved, and more people would have a voice in our government. Is that where Councilmember Chavez?
What's that? Okay, you were the motion maker. Councilmember Soria needs to hear that. There's been an amendment offered, and you were the second to the motion.
So can you repeat the amendment? It was to...
Add the language to, you can do immigrants and residents or residents, because that encompasses every facet.
I would accept and residents. I think the importance and, you know, my things to highlight, but yeah, I would be...
The second part of it would be to enable the people here on our committee that we appoint to have a direct line of communication with the mayor. And the mayor perhaps should have two members to be part of the committee. And it eliminates hearsay on hearsay on hearsay, if you will, my legal terminology here, but you'd have a more direct line of communication with the administration. That's, thank you very much, that's my comments. Appreciate that.
All right, Councilman Bretafeld. Well, I'm giving you the option. Do you wanna hear from the public first or make your comments? Councilman Asparza. You make your comments after, did you say, or now? Okay.
So I wanna thank all of the individuals and organizations who really flexed their muscle, put the heavy lifting into making this happen and working with councilmembers Chavez and Soria to bring this resolution before us. I will be, you know, supporting this resolution. And, you know, I wanna give all a shout-out for doing the hard work on the ground, serving our immigrant community. And I think today, what you'll see from our councils, we're gonna send a message back to you, letting you know that we're here, we have your back, in doing that work by, you know, establishing this first committee as a first step. And in particular, organizations like FIRM and Siren and others who work directly in my district, but for the community at large. You know, our immigrant community is not some kind of separate contingent from the Fresno community. You know, we all live here together. The immigrant community, it's my mother, my family, our friends, our neighbors, the folks, you know, our friends go to school together. And so, very happy to join in with my colleagues in supporting this resolution to send the message that, you know, we are one united community. And I think that, you know, this resolution's ultimately going to strengthen the voice of those residents who all of us on this dais represent and who you hear down in the audience work so hard for every day. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers, Asparza. Councilman Bretafeld?
Yes, I'll also be supportive of this. But question I had for you, on the qualifications, it says qualification for members including being an agent of a community benefit organization or private sector leader that works with the immigrant community in Fresno. I'm just wondering, are we restricting it to just folks who are involved with immigrants? As Councilmember Capriolo says, you know, residents as well. I'm just thinking there might be people who really have an interest in participating, but they may not be actively involved in working with immigrants. Are we restricting it too much? Okay, so I'm wondering, you're saying... So that's all, I'm just wondering about people who might wanna participate in this, but the language might restrict them from participating.
Yeah, they don't have to be business owners. I agree with that. We should modify that.
And ultimately, the councilmembers are gonna make the recommendations, so you're free to recommend whomever you think is...
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't wanna, you know, have it restricted at all. And then I was just sharing, there's 15 members. We've got 14 councilmembers, I mean, seven councilmembers with two appointments, I guess. The 15th would come from just the third, I'm sorry?
It would be a mayor appointment.
Just the one mayor appointment? Okay, that works for me.
All right.
Point of order, Councilmember Brando. I know you've got a number of cards, and I think the community sees that we have the support for this. So if you guys would be okay with maybe having one or two spokespersons for the committee speak, that would be great, or maybe keep it to like one minute? That would be helpful, because I know Councilmember Soria has to...
Yeah, we would appreciate one speaker so that we can get to the next really critical item, too. So anybody is welcome to come up.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, so we've got an appeal to get this item done so Councilmember Soria can get to her appointment. However, I have a number of cards, so it's my job to call these names. And if you just defer to another speaker, that would be fantastic. But I do wanna start on this list of cards, and the first one is Santos Garcia. So Santos, if you would come forward. And if you don't know Santos, let me introduce him. He's one of our colleagues from the city of Madera. I have the privilege of serving with him on the San Joaquin River Conservancy. Santos, good to see you in Fresno this morning. Give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. My name is Santos Garcia, I live at 413 South A Street in Madera. And I have the privilege of addressing you regarding this issue. I see that there is already pretty much consensus on moving forward with this, and I wanna thank you for that. Our immigrant community throughout the valley supports us by feeding our children, taking care of our children, taking care of our elderly, producing the agricultural products and building our homes. The Central Labor Council, which I represent, is for over 100,000 members throughout the Central Valley. And many of them are refugees, many of them are undocumented, and we need to show them the love. And so I congratulate you beforehand that you will be taking this. Thank you for bringing this up, and I congratulate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Santos. Next, we have, I think it's Sukena Hussain or Hussain? Sukena, yes.
Okay, so I'm here on behalf of CARE, but I'm gonna go ahead and defer so that other folks can...
Thank you.
Sorry, so we're taking your recommendations, it'll just be quick, so I'll be the last one to speak on this issue. I just wanna say thanks again to councilmembers Chavez and to Councilwoman Soria.
Sam, would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, Samuel Molina. I live in District 3, and I'm the state director for MiFamili vota. I just wanna say thank you all for your kind words. I really appreciate the council's support on this. We actually collected over 24 letters of support for this resolution, ranging from leaders from the Islamic Cultural Center to Central Valley Immigrant Integration Collaborative, attorneys like Camille Cook and Jessica Smith Babadia. So we're really behind this. We thank you all for your support, and thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And thank you. And I'd like to say, as council president, I really appreciate all of you that deferred to Sam. But I do have to ask, because it's my job, is there anybody else that would like to address this item before we vote on it? All right, thank you. So we have, and thank you all for coming today. So we have a motion and a second. With the amendments accepted, are we clear on that, Madam Clerk? Okay, and we have a clear screen, and so let's vote electronically. You ready, Brianna? All right, let's do it again. Yeah. There we go. Look at that. Passes unanimously. All right, thank you for those who attended. And now, I've got a request from one of my colleagues. So I said that we would get to the workshop. I imagine we're gonna get to the workshop after lunch at this point. But we do have a colleague that has to take off real soon, and she needs to hear this item if possible. It is item number 4B, the directing city staff to study and analyze formation of a parking authority and suspending negotiations of any sales of parking assets. And this is presented from Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Soria.
If we could wait a minute, because I don't have staff here for that, they're on their way.
Okay.
It'd be great if they could hear the presentation from the councilmembers.
While we have, we're waiting for staff. I'm gonna call David Love to come forward. He's turned in a card for unscheduled communication, and we'll take that unscheduled communication right now.
My name is David Love. I'm the first MONG saint. I'd like to, first, I'd like to reveal Poligene's organization of Satan, of her organization, Poligene. She works here. I would like to reveal that her organization is Dog World Satan in the One Universe of the number 66665555. That's her organization of the revelation of the MONG population of Kukons, of the Dog World. They live over there on City District Number 5. There's about six houses that does those Dog World Kukons on a sunny side and back. Poligene owns one of them, I believe, one of the house. There's five more houses on Teleri in Purdue. There's about another house on Ajil and Teleri. There's about a couple sets of apartments they used, they were hiding at. And I believe they threatened Donald Trump, the Pope. There'd be one election to look for Donald Trump. They're voting all the way to Washington DC to impeach Poligene. Verolation is really truthful. There's evidence of the satellite evidence. There's also the West Wing that Donald Trump had to look forward to. As they want to take over the East Wing. The east coast of the East Wing.
You, David. All right, now we, City Manager, did your staff?
No, we weren't anticipating this item right now, so we're trying to grab everybody. So is there any other little thing that you could do?
Are there any other members of the public that have unscheduled communication right now that would like to address us on any item?
Or what about the fire department item, since we have a chief here?
What's that? 3A. All right, I don't see any, so we're gonna close unscheduled communication. And let's move to item 3A.
Make a motion to approve the item.
Okay, but hold on just a second. I believe it says council district two right there.
I like that.
Press our chief.
All right.
Good morning, council. Carrie Donis, Fire Chief. The item in front of you is the recommendation for council to approve the three-year contract with the North Central Fire Protection District. This contract will bring in and generate a little over $3.1 million in revenue over those three years, which we are also recommending that we move that money towards opening a three-o-staffed engine company, starting in FY '20.
Council President, point of order, I'd like to withdraw my motion to your district.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you, Chief. I would just like to say, it was great taking a couple meetings. Took a couple for me to clearly understand this, but it really looks like you took an opportunity to improve fire staffing throughout the entire city by creating this fix in northwest Fresno.
Yes, that's true.
We really appreciate that, and I think it's gonna be good for the entire city. So that's a great thing. So I will make a motion to approve your recommendation.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Soria is my second. I will go out to the public, thank you, Chief. Any members of the public that would like to address this fire item? I don't see any. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yes.
So Chief, I wanna thank you for the meeting that we had. I know that you provided me a supplemental map, kind of doing the redistribution of the coverage once Fire Station 18 is moved to Shaw. I would like to see if we could include that as part of the record, because I know that when I first saw the map, I was a little concerned that areas which I represent seem to have less coverage than originally. So if we can kind of show that for the record so that the folks know that in the time that we get to to get to the construction of the permanent station, that coverage will shift again.
Would you like that now, or would you like me just to supply that with...
Just to supply it as a supplement for the record.
Very good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. A motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Chief, good job. Okay, City Manager, we have personnel in here to hear about...
Thank you, I appreciate you waiting on that one.
Yeah, not a problem, it worked out. So we are on item 4B, directing city staff to study and analyze formation of a parking authority and suspending negotiations of any sales of parking assets. This is from Vice President Arias and Councilmember Soria. Vice President, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and I'll keep this brief. The resolution is self-explanatory. You know, one of the biggest concerns and complaints that I get from downtown residents, I've been one for a decade now, is that parking is not as accommodating as it is in other cities. Smaller cities like ourselves, like Modesto, are much more digitalized and modern than we are. So this resolution simply asks us to finally evaluate whether a standalone parking authority that owns, manages, and maintains our parking assets is in the best interest of the city and residents. And our hope is that in six months, staff can come back with that evaluation, and we would have a council workshop to evaluate whether that's the direction that we should go or whether we continue the same path as keeping it as an internal department.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria.
I don't wanna add too much. I think, again, very self-explanatory. I think we are providing, I believe it's six months, to be able to study this. I think it's an important issue, as mentioned by my council colleagues. So just happy to be able to present this, again, as a way to get deeper into the issue and try to find a better solution for the parking issues that we face here in the city of Fresno.
You know, I'd like to clarify a few things. We do need some direction from council about the scope, because I wanna make sure that when we go out for a competitive bid to do this work, that we are in complete understanding of what it is that you want. So I have Thomas here from our parking manager to come up and ask some questions of you all, to give some direction. And in addition, I really want to have nine months. If we're gonna do a competitive bid on this, I wanna make sure that we have ample time to work with a consultant, and six months is gonna be pushing it. So I would request nine months to do the work.
So a couple of things. One, I don't know if it's the best way to have each seven councilmembers give you direction on how to form the RFP or the scope of the work.
Wait, I just have some general questions that I think we should discuss publicly. If it's parking that's just downtown, if it's citywide, there's a few things that, there are nuances in what you're asking that I do think that's important.
From my, the resolutions indicates parking assets and parking maintenance and operations. So we also have, we operate and enforce parking in other parts besides downtown. Fresno High Tower area, there's, so it would be an assessment of all our parking assets and operations.
Thomas, do you have any other questions about the scope that are general that is important for all of council to hear?
I think that clarifies the first piece, which is we're not talking just downtown footprint. We're talking the overall parking operation enforcement inventory beyond just the downtown quadrangle.
So Thomas, the reason for that, my council colleague co-sponsoring is because although she represents Fresno High and Tower, the city has designated some parking areas that it actively enforces. So, and there's been some significant challenges with enforcement of parking near Fresno City College and Fresno High that continues to be an issue for the neighborhoods in that area. So I suspect that in the future, there might be additional areas that the city wants to designate as, you know, parking zones. So I would assume that is what cover all that.
Okay, and that we would include a consultant scope looking at recommendations, not only for the inventory, maintenance and upkeep side, but also the enforcement and day-to-day operation component as a part of that?
Correct.
And then is council okay with the nine months that I've requested?
I think that's reasonable in light of the scope of this request. I thought, honestly, I thought it was downtown parking and the eight lots we have, and that was about it. But if we're going to broaden it to the entire community, the city of Fresno, I don't think you'll get it done in nine months, to be honest with you, but I think that's a fair request.
We agree, and plus.
There isn't parking in the entire city, let's be clear. There's really just two regions, downtown and South Tower and Fresno High. It's really the only places where we do parking enforcement.
We recently added the parking district over by the Veterans Hospital as well, which is the largest, so it adds to the scope.
You want to clarify, Thomas, where we do parking enforcement?
Yeah, because we do enforcement across all of the council districts, and then we have a number of residential parking districts, not just in District Seven, but we also have some in District Four, Three, One, and Two as well.
So Thomas, would you prefer that it not include enforcement? And if we don't include enforcement of those parking zones, we would be able to do this in six months?
No, I think we still would need the nine months regardless, and I think if we're looking at the revenue streams that comes from the enforcement side as well as the revenue generated downtown, so I think it's important we look at it holistically.
Yeah, and again, if it's a competitive bid, I just think it's, that will provide us ample time to make sure that we get, we get appropriate responses to the scope and develop the scope, et cetera. So that would give us, I think, ample time, as Thomas said.
Could I ask a question too, while we're talking about the scope? Does this, would this include the parking that we contract with for Woodward Park? Although it's not the parking structure, but there's parking that we control. We've got it subcontracted out, and you know the people that charge you $5 with that. Is that included? Or, and so that's kind of a scope question.
So they, the parking agency that we contract collects all our parking fees for all our regional parks, and all those parking fees go into the parking budget, right?
They go to parks. Even though we use the same vendor to operate the downtown operation versus the parks operation, the parks operation receives direction and that revenue goes into the parks budget.
Here's my concern with going to nine months. Six months puts us at the budget deliberations, adopting a budget for the city. Nine months puts us into August, September. So if it's going to be of any benefit, my concern is if we go beyond that, remember, this resolution also suspends any negotiations of sales of parking assets.
We understand that, but both six months and nine months takes us into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of questions I have. The scope of it was one, and I think we've got that sort of narrowed down, and I appreciate anything you can do in District Four as well. So my understanding, two questions. This sounds like we're going to privatize parking services. Is that what we're doing? It sure sounds like it. And the second question I have is, are we in, I didn't know that we had any parking, any people that were interested in buying our parking lots downtown. I mean, I'd love to sell them. They're falling apart. But is there something that requires suspending negotiations? What negotiate? Are we in escrow, and I don't know about it, or what's going on?
So Councilmember Capriolio, actually, the council has sold two parking assets recently, which by definition has privatized those parking assets. A parking authority by definition would keep the parking assets a public asset, not a privatization of the assets.
I want to point out though, Dan, can you come up here for me, please? Parking, if we do create a parking authority, and you all know that I'm very passionate about parking, and I cannot help myself, so I apologize. And we'll do a little song and dance regardless when we come back with the findings, because again, I can't help myself, so we'll do a parking workshop. But Dan, even if we do a parking authority, does the city, we still give up the right to control a lot of the rates, correct? In your experience. And Dan, for all of you that don't know, Dan is pretty much a national parking expert, and we're very, very lucky to have him on board here at the city. So, Mr. Zach?
So Dan, before you answer that, is that why we still have point meters parking? Right, the reason we're here today on this resolution is that we're still doing the flip phone version of parking in Fresno. So I don't want to have a dialogue and debate over the status of parking. Excuse me, I have the floor. And I understand that this entity, as the resolution identifies, would control rates, future rates. That's what a parking authority does.
So we do have, we do have a bunch of smart meters tied up in the South Stadium grant that a couple developers are working on. We would have had smart meters. The goal for the city at that time was to have smart meters at the time that Fulton Street was opened. So because that project has not moved forward, we have delayed putting out a parking RFP because we had this money sitting at Fresno Cog basically waiting to buy smart meters. So having said that, Dan and Thomas can talk about how just yesterday, I believe, is that correct, we released the smart meter RFP? Okay, perfect, so.
I appreciate that, but smart meters came in 10 years ago. So the fact that we're just now releasing an RFP, irrespective of what individual developments are taking place, is a challenge for me. So with that, council, I'm willing to give staff more time. Nine months I'm uncomfortable with. I'm willing to go to seven months as a compromise if that's the way of the council.
I'm okay with seven months.
I'm hearing council all the time.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm hearing council all the time talk about how you want to make sure that we do a very good competitive bid on everything. I'm asking for an additional two months right now to make sure we do that. You always want to make sure that we're entertaining every single competitive, you know, the competitive process, and I'm asking respectfully for two more months.
All right. Do I have any other council members that want to make comments? I'm gonna, it sounds like there's.
Motion, there's a second?
So there's a motion, there's a second for a seven-month return time to have this work completed. I'm open in the seven-month cycle for the staff to come back and give us an update. And at that time, if you need more time, then it's fair. But we need a set, an aggressive timeline, or else we're going to have this conversation all over again in a year. So seven months, staff comes back and gives us an update. If a few more weeks is needed, then I think we'll be fine with that, to make sure that we have a good quality product.
I have, screen is clear, so I'm going to ask a question to the authors. I'm very supportive of this. When we sold the Spiral Garage, or we entered into the phase of selling the Spiral Garage in January, I did ask the city manager to look into a parking authority, and I think this is the next step of that, and so I'm going to be very supportive. But in addition to the Spiral Garage, which is already under a negotiation, are there any other assets that are currently not going to be included in our parking lots? Are those going to be locked up until we have this parking authority concept brought back to us?
My understanding, Council President, and I don't know if this is more of a closed session conversation, given there's real estate negotiations, but my understanding is that we are not engaged in any other negotiations to sell parking assets at this time, and that the Spiral Garage would continue going forward as it is already in contract.
Okay, so that's the only one?
The Spiral Garage is under contract to sell. That's simply in the due diligence period for the buyer, so that is out of our hands.
So that's the only public, the city-owned garage that is really left out of this parking authority study, is that right?
The, was it Lot Two, is under exclusive negotiation agreement that the council approved in December. That's not an agreement to purchase, just a negotiation agreement.
Is that excluded from this conversation of the parking authority?
Under that agreement, we are bound to negotiate in good faith. So it would not be, it would be excluded, yes.
Okay, all right. That was just a point of clarity. All right, let me go out to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item of a parking authority? I don't see any. We have a motion and a second. Screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Thank you. Okay, it doesn't look like we would get our workshop done before lunch. We have a couple of folks that have to leave right at 12, and we'll be back at 1:30. We're going to try to get to the general admin items, and so general admin item three B, award a requirements contract to Univar USA for some chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities.
Good morning, Mike Harbaugh, Department of Public Utilities. So request to record, to award a requirements contract to Univar USA for three years, the possibility to one-year extensions. This is to purchase sodium hypochlorite, which is a chemical we use for disinfection at our surface water treatment facilities, as well as throughout the water distribution system. The amount of the contract is $543,222.22, and I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve, a second. Any members of the public like to address this chemical acquisition item? Seeing none, screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Item three C, approving an application for grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation's Infrastructure for Rebuilding America program for Veterans Boulevard corridor improvements. Shelby.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. My name is Shelby McNabb. I'm the grants administrator with the Department of Public Works. The item before you today is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for Veterans Boulevard from the Infrastructure for Rebuilding America program. The total amount requested from Infra is $25 million. Staff recommends council adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the grant application. This concludes my presentation, and I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Shelby. As the council member in this district, sharing it with Councilmember Soria, I'd like to thank Shelby. We applied for the same grant last year and were denied, but inside of our denial, we were told how to reinforce and improve our grant application for this year. And Shelby, Scott, you guys have done great work to give an even stronger presentation this year, and I appreciate that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll make a second. Just want to add some comments, because I know that this also impacts District One in terms of, in a positive way. I know that there's been a lot of conversations as we are going through the West Area Specific Plan about the congestion that is on Shaw, Ashland, Shields, McKinley, all those areas moving east and west from the city. And so as, you know, I'm very supportive of moving forward with this project. I know that we're getting really close, but I've had already conversations with our mayor and the administration about figuring out how we look at fixing Ashland in terms of a priority and also Shaw, so that the folks moving from west to east and east to west when they're going back home from work, many of them come to the downtown area or go up north, that they are not dealing with the crazy congestion that is happening and obviously some dangerous traffic conditions during especially the peak hours. So I'm hoping that we can look at a comprehensive plan to be able to address the infrastructure out there in addition to what Veterans Boulevard is going to do. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any members of the public like to address this Veterans Boulevard item? All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero with council, oh, no, seven zero. All council members present. Councilmember Soria, I have a question for you. There is one closed session item that you might like to be a part of. We could probably get it done in 12 minutes. Would you like to, that's the? We're going to dismiss to closed session right now and hear this one item before lunch, so Councilmember Soria can be a part of that. City Attorney, do you need to make any announcement regarding that?
Yes, just for this item, it would be Conference of Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, Waitlow versus City of Fresno.
Thank you. We will come back to the public portion at 1:30. Thank you.
[Inaudible] That's bad place there. So yeah, there's no supervisor, nothing. So that's on you, my man. But I'm not mad at you, okay? But it's not good. It's a bad place there. The owner's near straight, you know, so, yeah. So that's why everybody move out because there's no supervisor.
Thanks, Carrie.
Welcome.
Nelson, you're going to get your staff to work with him?
Yeah, she was talking to him prior, and she's going to follow up with him right now. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to hit our 10:30 AM item, a workshop regarding Community Choice Energy, sponsored by council members. Choice Energy, sponsored by Councilmember Chavez.
Good to have our folks come up. Then, you'll be doing the presentation? Okay. And is this the PowerPoint that we're going to be following?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. So, council, we have that in that packet in front of you, the blue binder, want to follow along. So, you know, these gentlemen came and met with me a couple months ago, and we've been working on setting up some time for them to come and present what this is, how it would benefit the city, and see if it would work for us here. So, with that, we allocated some time for them to do a workshop, and floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Mike Dozier. Mike Dozier Consulting, and I'm going to lead this. You don't have to follow along on the PowerPoint presentation at this point, but those following me will provide that for you. Fortunately for you, I only have a short bit here. So, I want to set the tone. Number one, if I were you, there'd be two questions that I'd be asking. One is, what are you trying to sell me? Why do this? And the other one would be, what's the benefit? You know, what's the benefit to the city? And so, I'd like to set that tone. Number one, this is no hard sell. This is a long process. If you decide to, this is of interest to you. It's going to take a little time to do, and throughout the process, you can get off of it, you can forget it or whatever. At this point, it's just a presentation and moving forward from there. The benefits. The benefits are economic development, the ability to have a local control for the use of your energy product. For example, you can create programs that are specific to the needs of your community. I'll give you a couple examples. One, you could provide some incentive to job generators for respect to the, to energy generation or for energy costs. One of the big things that I hear from the manufacturing sector is that they're at a disadvantage for the cost of energy in this area. So, if there was some programs that would be able to provide them and some incentives, that's a program that you can devise. There's also incentives such as providing energy needs for low income, and that's something that's been done in other communities where you can provide low-interest or no-interest loans for energy efficiency and things of that nature. But basically, it's local control, it's local determination, and there's a lot of feasibility, or a lot of flexibility, I should say, I'm sorry. And it provides you the opportunity to move forward on your energy needs. This is only with respect to the generation, not the distribution. So, I'm going to leave it at that. Woody Hastings from the Center for Climate Protection is going to follow, and they'll go through the process of community choice aggregate, and then there will be questions and answers at the end. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Woody Hastings, and I'm with the Center for Climate Protection. Thanks for the opportunity to provide you with this information about community choice Our organization, Center for Climate Protection, has been working on this issue, community choice energy, since 2005, and we spearheaded the effort to help get the second community choice agency in the state of California launched, and it launched in 2014, and we've worked with other municipalities around the state on this, so that's where our experience comes from. First, I think I'd like to introduce two other members of our team that are here, Barry Vesser, who focuses on outreach to the business community, and he'll help with the questions and answers, and Destiny Rodriguez, who many of you know, who lives and works here in the Central Valley, and she's our key community organizer. I think it's important to note upfront that we, the Center for Climate Protection, we don't have a commercial interest in this effort. We're not, we're an independently funded 501(c)(3) organization, not seeking contracts now or at any time along the way. There are three main things I want to touch on in my brief comments, and I'll then hand things off to Darrell Pyle, Hanford's city manager, who will share a bit more about what community choice energy is, Hanford's reasons for pursuing community choice, and a bit about what their experience has been thus far in their evaluation. First, what is community choice energy or community choice aggregation, as it is legally known? Think of it as municipal service of electricity, but without owning or maintaining the delivery infrastructure, the poles and the wires. But with the ability to do a lot of things, including setting rates and adding value by offering local energy programs and a lot more. It's made possible by state law that was enacted in 2002, and it empowers local governments like the City of Fresno with decision-making authority about sources of energy for electricity generation. Now, PG&E remains an ongoing partner and collaborator in this. They continue to own, maintain, operate the transmission and distribution infrastructure, and they collaborate on a daily basis with about a dozen community choice agencies in their service territory. There are a total of about 19 operational community choice agencies in the state. There's no job loss for PG&E, and there's no profit loss. Their profit model is not based on sales of kilowatt-hours of electricity. It's based on their infrastructure investments, so there's no profit loss there for PG&E. Second, what is so compelling about community choice? Why has this movement emerged over the last few years of community choice? Well, it's powerful because it takes, harnesses an existing revenue stream, and in Fresno's case, it's something greater than $200 million a year that currently leaves Fresno in the form of the energy bills that businesses and residents pay for generation that leaves Fresno. And with community choice, that revenue stream takes a U-turn into local control. You know, allowing for more of that money, more of that money, not all of it, more of it, to remain in the local economy, and that is a powerful economic tool. Third, community choice has really taken off in the last few years. As I said, there's 19 operational agencies representing nearly half the counties and over 150 cities in the state. They've been responsible for over 2,000 megawatts of new renewables being built in the state and supported over 4,000 jobs, and they've been doing a lot more. And 2,000 megawatts, for someone who just wants to get a sense of what that is, that's a little bit more than two nuclear power plants' worth of electricity. So, we provided each of you the packet of information. Included in that packet is a letter from Jane Bender, who was raised in Fresno here, and she was also a council member and mayor of Santa Rosa while we were pursuing community choice. She and other peers from areas with operational community choice agencies would be happy to come here to Fresno and share their experience with you if a lengthier study session is scheduled, and we do suggest that. Most cities schedule sort of an hour, hour-and-a-half-long focused study session on this issue because it is kind of complex, and as Mr. Dozier mentioned, it's, the quickest one of these has been instituted was two years, typically takes two, three, maybe up to four years to get one up and running. And finally, just more information is available at our dedicated website on this issue, cleanpowerexchange.org. So, I'd now like to ask Darrell Pyle, city manager of Hanford, to come to the podium. Darrell will apprise you of Hanford's pursuit of community choice, share a bit more about why they're pursuing it and what their experience has been. And yes, the printout of those slides is in your packet with a little placeholder for you to take notes if you wish. Darrell?
Welcome to Fresno, Darrell.
Thank you. Excellent. Good afternoon, your owners and staff. Darrell Pyle. Conversation related to community choice aggregation. This conversation started most recently in the city of Hanford a little over a year ago, when I was approached by a couple of local energy developers with a plan. They owned a lot of real estate adjacent to our industrial park and said, "We would like to develop a utility-scale solar project large enough to provide all of the electricity for every customer in the city of Hanford." And I was intrigued, and I thought, "Well, what is the mechanism for us to get that electricity from your solar plant into the meters of our ratepayers?" So, I began a homework assignment and identified the concept of community choice aggregation being such a mechanism. In my homework assignment, I recognized that this conversation had taken place once before in Kings and Fresno County back in 2005. After that CCA legislation was initially signed into law, a group of 13 public agencies in Kings and Fresno County got together and formed a Joint Powers Authority with a vision of developing a 500-megawatt natural gas-fired power plant that would provide electricity for every agency in the JPA. Recognizing what the cost of that particular venture was, the effort and engineering that went into it took enough time that, lo and behold, the housing crisis was upon them, and financing such a project just seemed elusive, and the Joint Powers Authority disappeared. That was a much different regulatory environment than we have today and a much different economic climate than we have today. So, why would the city of Hanford consider forming a community choice aggregation entity and basically becoming the electric provider for the citizens of Hanford? Well, my first call was to our government liaison with Southern California Edison, and Hanford is unique in that my industrial park is powered by PG&E, but the rest of my city is powered by Southern California Edison. When I called Mr. Brian Thoburn at SCE, I said, "What do you know about community choice aggregation?" And he said, "Well, as of today, 72% of our customers either live in an entity that is covered by community choice, or they're in an agency that is exploring community choice aggregation." And I thought, "Wow, 72% are already on this path. Maybe I'm a little late to the game." In my view, the opportunity to enter into a community choice aggregation entity would allow us to speed the delivery of electricity to the growing demand in our industrial park. Our city council had approved indoor cultivation of medicinal cannabis, and we had just inked a deal with Fair Day Future Electric Car Manufacturing in our industrial park, and we know that the lead time for the public utilities to bring in an additional service load was quite lengthy. So, we talked about opportunities to island electricity or provide electricity even behind the meter to make sure our booming industrial park didn't run short of electricity. The other features, as Mr. Hastings described, is that opportunity to provide local rate control, just like you do for your sewer fund, your water fund, and your refuse fund. Under this particular scenario, the investment locally of private dollars in energy generation projects was going to be an economic development stimulus for our community as well. I just learned recently about some new legislation that requires your portfolio, and under a CCA, the city's energy portfolio has the same rules and regulations as the big utility providers in terms of its mix of renewable energy. And a new bill will require that 65% of our renewable portfolio be derived from long-term power purchase agreements, and that is an additional incentive for the private sector to invest in utility-scale energy projects if they know they've got a long-term power purchase agreement on the backside to make sure that that electricity will be purchased. So, the legislation continues to add value to our original thoughts that we'd love to have that electricity developed and produced locally. So, as I continued my education in the subject, I learned about the California Community Choice Association, which provides educational materials on the subject, and I recognized there were two models currently being utilized in the state of California. One was the model that Fresno and Kings County agencies pursued in 2005, which was a straight Joint Powers Authority-type model, where you might have representation on the JPA board. You might not have as much authority on rate-setting and long-term power purchase agreements as you would under the second model, which is a single jurisdiction model. That's the model the city of Hanford is invested in currently. And I learned about that particular model through some friends at the city of Lancaster who were a few years ahead of me in this process, and they developed their electric utility known as Lancaster Choice Energy. CalCCA also provides best practices, and some of the things they can highlight are the fact that you have the ability to protect your general fund under this CCA environment. When the city of Hanford develops our budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, we will be establishing a new enterprise fund, and it'll be our electric fund, and it'll look just like our sewer fund, our water fund, and our refuse fund. It also provides the council to invest some of that savings that we'll experience in lower rates in projects that are near and dear to the council's heart. It could include the development of economic development rates in our industrial park. It could also include the opportunity to invest in energy efficiency projects for existing property owners inside city limits. We know that whenever we step off into a new venture, we can go it alone, and sometimes the education comes with some hard knocks and maybe some money spent unnecessarily. So, I reached out again to my friends at the city of Lancaster, and in their Lancaster Choice Energy Enterprise Fund, they actually have two people that assist other agencies in establishing their own community choice aggregation entities. And in our case, they will actually help us procure electricity to fill the needs of our community. So, our city council elected to enter into a relationship with the city of Lancaster for the formation and developments of our initial declaration to pursue community choice aggregation, and that's notification to PG&E and Southern California Edison that we're going to start this conversation. They also helped us develop our local ordinances and resolutions, and we developed our implementation plan and our feasibility study to determine if there was enough margin available to make this pencil out. As I catch up with my slides. Under the Lancaster model, they offer different portfolios to each homeowner, each business owner in Lancaster. Some customers choose the least-cost energy bundle possible. "I just want cheaper electricity," and that's available. And some people say, "I'll pay a little bit more as long as 100% of my electricity comes from renewable sources," and that option is also available. And how it works is relatively simple. As Mr. Hastings described, Southern California Edison, Pacific Gas and Electric, they don't lose money as a result of this because they're not allowed to make a profit on the price of the electricity, but they have entered into long-term power purchase agreements over time that may not be as lucrative as those available to us today. So, from the customer's perspective, they're going to open up their same-old PG&E or Southern California Edison bill like they always have. There will be one line item different on that bill, and that's the price of electricity and the name of the entity that sold you that electricity. Edison and PG&E maintain all the lines. They read all the meters, they send all the bills, and they do all your collections for you. So, what we're talking about is the margin on the price of electricity that is available through this particular situation. And the way it works, once your community choice aggregation entity is formed, all of the ratepayers are in, and they have an opt-out option. If they say, "No, I think you guys must be up to something. I opt out." Not a problem. You push a button, and you're out. Your bill doesn't change. If you don't opt out, a few months down the road, your bill will show up. It'll have one line item different, and your bill may be 2% or 3% lower than it was a couple of months before. Those are the conversation topics that definitely caught my council's interest, the ability to allow our citizens to participate in rate-setting and help council come up with strategies for reinvesting some of those savings that they anticipate coming from the community choice aggregation entity. Now, there's deadlines and runout periods from the time you start the process till the time you file your paperwork with the California Public Utilities Commission, and if you get it done by December 31 of a given year, your implementation date can begin by May, two years out. So, we filed our paperwork December 31, 2018. The go-live date for Hanford Clean Energy will be May of 2020. So, that gives us time to prepare our books. It gives us time to bring on a couple of staff members who will be paid for out of this enterprise fund and begin to develop those relationships with local energy providers and some of our procurement professionals that will be engaging here in the near future. So, interesting path, interesting opportunity. It was a great learning experience to find out what the thoughts were back in 2005 when this was originally initiated. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, your honor.
Thanks, Darrell. And thanks, Mike and Woody, as well.
I just wanted to add really quickly. Hi again, my name is Destiny Rodriguez. I am here today to show my love for Fresno, my home, and also show my love for community choice energy. And I am a member of the Community Choice Energy team. I have been talking to several people... I have been talking to several people here in the community, leaders, business owners, and there is a lot of interest around this concept. I am very interested in community choice as a means of proving air quality, which can equate to health, better health for all. I'm ready and eager to follow up as needed, and I am here locally, so I am happy to meet with any of you at your discretion. Thank you.
Councilman Chavez?
Yeah, just had a quick, Mr. Hastings, just a couple of questions that you could... So I think we understand the model conceptually, but I want to just kind of hone in just for the sake of argument. So who owns the infrastructure within this model of the energy generating?
So the incumbent utility in Fresno's case, that would be Pacific Gas &amp; Electric, continues to own, maintain, operate the long-distance transmission in addition to the sort of more local poles and wires distribution part of the utility. They continue with the blue trucks responding to calls and things like that, yeah.
So then what would be the city's role in adopting this and facilitating this?
The city's role, what the city would do, and this ultimately is a vote of the city council to, "Yes, we want to do community choice aggregation," the city's role becomes the retail, local retail electricity service provider, sort of, you know, as I said in my comments earlier, sort of another, I think of it as another municipal service, in this case, electricity. And so it's authority over procurement of, you know, wholesale electricity that you then sell, sell retail. However, there's a heck of a lot more to it than just that bread-and-butter wholesale-retail sort of dynamic, and that is that, you know, this revenue stream comes in, and you can accrue net revenues, and you can use those net revenues to promulgate any number of local programs tailored to the needs of the local community. And we're seeing that happen with the operational community choice agencies in the state. They are offering programs in response to the needs of the community. And in our case, up in Sonoma County, we had those wildfires in 2017, and there's an advanced energy rebuild program with up to $17,500 in incentives for folks to rebuild their homes in more safe way, more resilient way, more energy-efficient way, all the way up to solar and batteries, right? So, those kind of things.
That makes sense. And maybe, I don't know if it's yourself or Mr. Pyle with the city of Hanford, so you mentioned that part of the model you adopted powers your industrial park area?
Yes.
How big is your industrial park area down there?
We've probably got 300 acres. We're looking to expand and annex the next thousand acres to continue to compete. And the lead time for the energy infrastructure is pretty lengthy in such an endeavor, but we do have local developers willing to invest as long as they can get guaranteed return on that investment through the price of electricity. If the city were to go out and build that same utility-scale solar infrastructure, we would be subject to prevailing wage, so the cost of electricity would naturally be higher. When the private sector goes out and builds that exact same infrastructure, they can sell me the electricity cheaper than I can create it myself.
So then, within that model, and part of the interest I had when I met with the team initially was because we had talked about carving out specific energy for small business support. We know that's a big part of their overhead and the cost. And so have you adopted anything like that in Hanford where you would help local small businesses with their energy costs?
We came up with a similar program under Community Development Block grant to assist low-income persons in meeting their utility obligations. When we had the conversation about community choice aggregation, the council, one of their primary goals was to develop economic incentive rates, and that could be big business, that could be small business. So your council would be in control of that rate structure, and you can provide any incentive you see most appropriate for the city of Fresno.
Okay, yeah, and that answers the question. It's essentially a tool to drive economic investment and development specific. Okay? Anybody else want to say something?
Yeah. Paul and Miguel.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Yeah, thank you. So the source, whoever wants to answer this, the source of the energy is PG&E?
The source of the energy could be one of thousands of energy creators or generators. The power you buy could be produced from a coal plant in Pennsylvania, or a wind farm in Tehachapi, or a solar farm in Fresno County. That's who generates the electricity. You would be buying it from similar sources that PG&E and Southern California Edison procure electricity from. There is an amazing analysis that delves down into the exact time of demand for your residents, and the ability to get laser-focused on when you buy power, for what duration, to as closely mirror your community's energy demand as possible helps you gain efficiencies and generate more savings that you can invest back into your community.
I was looking for a website for Lancaster or Hanford that can illustrate to the depth I may go or my colleagues may go as to how this works. Is there such a thing out there that delves deep into this subject?
And folks at Lancaster Choice Energy, that is the city of Lancaster's enterprise fund for electricity, they do have some great detailed information. They'll be happy to forward to your city manager.
Very good. And then, it's an enterprise fund, so how do those in our city, the enterprise fund maintains the finances, the benefits and the detriments, if you will? And it's hard to pull that out into our general fund. I don't know if Hanford has the same alignment of process.
True and correct. The magic of a may-go-live date for this new enterprise fund is that that's when the electricity demand begins to ramp up for the summer, and it provides you with immediate positive cash flow into your newly-established fund. In our particular instance, we will initially fund about $750,000 into that enterprise fund to make the first payment of electricity going out while we're waiting for the payment from Southern California Edison and PG&E to be delivered to us. They bill your customers, they read the meters, and they collect the payments on your behalf, and each month they forward you the payments for the electricity your consumers purchased.
Interesting. And what if there's a failure in the power grid from all these numerous sources, one or all? A fire unfortunately happened in Northern California. If it wipes out a source, do you have some sort of backup system or...?
The infrastructure is strictly the responsibility of the major public utility, PG&E or Edison. They will maintain all the wires, make all of the repairs, and continue to invest in the delivery and distribution of the electricity you have purchased. So you're not at risk. If there's a forest fire and there's liability determined to be that of PG&E or Edison or one of the other major utilities, that liability never transfers to you as a community choice aggregator.
I was more concerned with the interruption of power, although the lawyer came out when you said that. So what is the cost for this operation to PG&E? You've got to pay something to use the grid, I would think.
The same rates. PG&E and Edison do have the ability to continue to collect revenue, and if you look at your existing bill, there are charges for major transmission and distribution. Those charges don't change on your bill. So PG&E and Edison still get paid for all of the services they currently provide you.
Very good.
Mr. Hastings may be able to clarify some additional questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of pieces here in response to Councilmember Capriolio's questions, which is that, you know, whether or not PG&E would be the source of the electricity, is that, you know, PG&E currently only owns and operates, controls about 30% of the electricity that it sells you. It also goes out to that wholesale electricity market and purchases from quite a number of different suppliers and provides. And when a community choice agency first launches, that's pretty much what it's doing. It's going to that wholesale market and saying, "We want solar, wind, you know, geothermal, hydro, whatever, you get your power mix." Then the other piece I wanted to mention was that in terms of all of the community, the nineteen operational community choice agencies, they each have their own website. On our cleanpowerexchange.org website, we've tried to make it easy, and we have an interactive map that has all 482 cities in the state of California and all 58 counties, and you can click in there, and it's updated regularly. And below that map is a list of all the operational agencies, and it's hyperlinked to each one of their websites. So one-stop shopping, you can go to that page, and you can visit any one of those, Yolo County, LA County, you know, all over the state of California, and visit those websites and drill down into the detail of what they're offering their customers. And something that's in your packet, we did get Peninsula Clean Energy in San Mateo County sent a letter to the city council here, and that included an attachment that's right behind the letter that describes some of the programs they're offering. What is the largest city that this service is provided to at this point? Currently, the largest single city is San Jose, California. They just launched last September, and so that's the largest in the governance models. That's the largest single city that's done it without forming a JPA. And now, the largest community choice agency, though, is Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, and that's Los Angeles County and about 33 cities within the county who have all joined into JP, plus Ventura County actually also joined that. Is there a preference to go solo as San Jose has done, or would it be better to...? You know, there are pros and cons. That's something for the city council to evaluate, whether or not you want to have Fresno, City of Fresno Energy Choice, or Fresno joining together with the county and maybe some of the other cities in the county in a JPA. There's pros and cons in both. Certainly, if the city does it on its own, single jurisdiction, you're in complete control. The governing board of Fresno Energy Choice is the city council, and if it's a JPA, you'll get one or two representatives on a governing board of that JPA. So that's sort of an initial pro and con. I mean, there's a firewall with the JPA, a pro, is that, you know, your general fund is far more protected in that case, right? Very good, thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilman Arias.
Thank you, Council President. Can you walk me through, in simple terms, where exactly do we realize the savings? How do we realize the savings? I heard you talk about avoiding prevailing wage, which personally is not something I'm a fan of.
I didn't, I'm not, I didn't mention prevailing wage, but I'll say that, to answer that question about, you know, the cost savings, rate savings, you know, the current market is favorable to renewables. Solar has come way down in cost, wind has come way down in cost, and so it's a new market as Mr. Pyle mentioned. And so the ability to procure renewables in particular and offer the service at rates that are competitive and in some cases slightly lower than the incumbent utility, that's what's there. It's also, you know, it is a non-for-profit agency, no shareholder dividends, that kind of thing, so...
So essentially, it's from the profit portion of the enterprise? Because I'm assuming PG&E would have access to the same open-market, lower rates. PUCs require PG&E to buy more renewable every year, so it's really about removing the corporate profit from the formula and giving it to us at lower rates?
That's a piece of it. You know, they have access to the same market, but they're not always interested in the same market. There are a lot of mid-size utility-scale projects that the large utilities tend not to be interested in, so community choice agencies have been striking contracts for, you know, smaller utility-scale projects, a lot of them, by the way, here in the Central Valley. And those projects are going in, and the power is being wheeled out to communities elsewhere, I think, to reap the full benefit of a community choice, to reap the full benefit of those projects. The jobs are created here in the Central Valley, but the power does not serve the local community. So, you know, that's an opportunity. If you have your own community choice agency, you can be an off-taker for those projects here in the Central Valley in Fresno County.
It seems that we're going to continue to utilize PG&E's infrastructure. So who absorbs liability if we ever have to get to that point?
Who?
Who absorbs the liability?
For the infrastructure?
For the infrastructure, the power delivery. If the system breaks down for whatever reason, who absorbs the liability of that?
So the liability for the infrastructure, the delivery, transmission, distribution remains the purview of PG&E in your case.
So what liability would the JPA or the city be held accountable for?
So the risks that are associated with community choice are, you know, let's point to three. There's legislative regulatory and market. I think, you know, you're out there in the electricity market, and it's a very dynamic market, very complex, you know, and so there's a daily need to navigate that market. How do these community choice agencies do it? Are you all expected to become experts in that? No. All of them have hired folks that have decades of experience that have come in to help run these agencies. The governing boards are sort of higher-level policy, you know, setting, you know, what kind of general, you know, we want to be able to offer our customers free different possibilities, a base rate that's lower or the same as PG&E, something that's maybe a little bit more, or something that's solar-related, and then maybe 100% option. A lot of them do that kind of thing. So your role is really that whole sort of generation procurement side. It's not necessarily, although you have statutory authority to build your own projects if you so choose, and that's what San Joaquin Valley Power Authority was planning to do. They wanted to build a power plant, right? And you can do that under a community choice law. You don't have to, though, and so the...
But as we stand now, PG&E assumes all liability when it comes to operations of their facilities and delivery of services.
So the liabilities for the, as again, I think Mr. Pyle mentioned, there are literally thousands of suppliers of electricity. So the liabilities on, say, any given solar farm, or wind farm, or power plant of any type, a lot of that risk and liability for the project itself, if a hailstorm comes and hits a solar thing, that's not on the community choice agency. Now, there may be some...
But there will be some level of liability that we would be exposed to, correct? We're going into the energy business. Whatever, however deep we go into the energy business, whether we built our own plants or just purchased, we now have a level of liability that we've never had in the world of energy services.
Right. So this is the kind of thing where, so the usual first step for any jurisdiction in this is to allocate funds for a technical study. Currently, technical studies, not much more than $50,000 to do a technical study. And by the way, there are some funds available from some of the operational agencies to support that, if you're interested in that. But technical study will give you much more granularity on a lot of these questions around risk, but also around, you know, what the possibilities are for the type of power mix you can offer, and at what rates, what your service territory is like. So that's sort of the first step where you can do that. And if we do, if you do choose to hold a second, you know, longer study session, we can bring in some of the attorneys that work within the community choice agencies that deal with that risk aspect and answer that in a more thorough way.
My last question, there's been a lot of references to money that could be saved, money that can be reinvested back in the community. Can you give me some concrete examples and numbers on what that looks like for the folks who've already done it?
Sure. I mean, the one that's closest to us is the one where we live, again, Sonoma County. And so I mentioned the one about the folks that lost their homes in the wildfires. There's that Advanced Energy Rebuild project. That's a $33 million program, by the way, and they, Stone Clean Power brought in Pacific Gas &amp; Electric as a partner on that, and our local air district on that. So that's a $33 million program that's reinvesting in the local economy. Stone Clean Power just got finished with a third iteration of an incentive program, providing folks, including 30% of the incentive funds, to get folks into electric vehicles, and they've given away free smart chargers to go along with those electric vehicles. So investing in things that matter to folks and that help clean the air and/or save costs, those kind of things. So that was, I forget the numbers on that, but I can get those to you. You know, the full numbers of the dollar reinvestment from those revenues in that local, you know, electric vehicle. By the way, the electric vehicle dealers in the community really liked that, and some of the ones that weren't even in the program offered the same rates, similar discounts to folks, so it really had a spin-off effect. And it looks like Darrell wants to say something.
Your Honor, on that note, City of Lancaster, population 170,000. I believe last year, their ratepayers experienced a savings of just under $1 million, and that's $1 million that the ratepayers saved that turned around and put that right back into the local economy at the mall and investing in other projects around their homes. So the city achieved a level of savings on top of that. So the city achieved a level of savings on top of that almost $1 million savings that the community did, and then their council chose on how to reinvest that.
Thank you. Councilman Chavez.
Mr. Hastings, just two quick questions. I'm going to be following up with you guys on a couple other items that I had, a little bit more specific to the area I present. So is this model scalable? If a city decides to do this, do they have to go big at once, or is that, what's the recommended point where you come in and opt this?
Sure. There are, it is fairly typical to launch the program in phases. It is required under the law that if you do launch a community choice agency in your jurisdiction, that all customers ultimately be offered the service on equal terms. It's not required that it all happen all at once. So there are typically phased rollouts of the service, plus a small tranche of customers being rolled in in the first iteration, working out the bugs, working out the billing. Typically, no matter how many times this happens, there's little bugs and things to work out. So you do a small grouping of customers, and then a larger tranche of customers, and then maybe a third. So that is typically what happens. And sort of further, perhaps, answer to that is that, you know, if you're talking about sort of jurisdictional, you know, Fresno, City of Fresno could join with the county, then it would be county-wide. Fresno County could join with a neighboring county. So in terms of that kind of scalability, there are pros and cons of that kind of expansion, or, you know, larger versus smaller. So there's also that sort of scaling aspect.
Okay. And then last question is, can the city outline the source of the energy? So, you know, we talked about the industrial parks, so hypothetically, could the city of Fresno say, you know what, we want all energy utilized in the distribution center or industrial park to be renewable energy? Is that an option, or is that not?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, that is what the city would have sort of at its discretion, is sort of really do an evaluation of the potential for, you know, resources locally to be developed. If there's local, you know, underutilized municipal facilities, or brownfields, or warehouse rooftops, or parking lot, things like that, where you say, wow, we could maybe install some, you know, solar here with electric vehicle charging and maybe battery storage. And by the way, battery storage, stationary storage is really doing the same thing that solar did over the last 10, 15 years, which was technology improving rapidly, costs coming down rapidly, and so it's another really sort of practical, affordable option in this whole mix.
Thank you.
Councilman Brad Devell.
Yeah, you said, when asked about the risk, you said there were three levels, legislative portfolio?
Sure. So I think, you know, I'll typically talk about three categories of risk. So there's the state legislature that can enact legislation that's either favorable or in some cases unfavorable, and so there are certainly at least two that are favorable, the initial community choice law and the strengthening law that was passed in 2012. So there's the legislature. And then, you know, and then there's the regulatory risk, which is that you've got the, primarily, it's the California Public Utilities Commission that has a regulatory relationship with community choice agencies, not as hard and fast as with the utilities, because community choice agencies are run by local publicly, you know, publicly elected officials, and so they're granted a greater authority under the statute. But there are rules, regulations, and things that happen at the CPUC all the time, some of them, again, favorable, some of them not. So there's this sort of thing you have to pay attention to. And by the way, CalCCA that Mr. Pyle mentioned has staff regularly now in both Sacramento and at the CPUC in San Francisco, you know, navigating those regulatory risks. And then the other one is a daily navigation of the market risks. You know, there's costs of energy and, you know, contracts coming up that you might take advantage of and miss out on, and that kind of thing. So there's a daily navigation of that market landscape.
I see the city manager's not here. Have you guys looked at this, from the administration side?
We have, we've been looking at any and all opportunities for energy savings. This particular issue has not yet come in front of us, but we would be more than happy to meet with the representatives and get some details.
Okay. Isn't this kind of all kind of outdated stuff? Because I keep seeing on the news that the Green New Deal is coming, and we don't need energy, electricity and coal anymore, it's going to be gone, and we're getting rid of airplanes, so is this, why are we even talking about this? I understand we don't even need this anymore. You don't have to respond.
I think we're going to continue to need electricity, whether it's green or not, and that is something that's a discretion, actually, of the city council, whether it's green. I mean, it does need to be under the state's renewable portfolio standard. So I think the state set a goal of 100% by 2045, so that's ambitious, but I think it can happen. And community choice is actually leading the way on that. They're the ones doing the purchasing of all of these solar farms in the Central Valley, causing them to be built. Over 4,000 people are employed as a result of that, and those are probably stale numbers. They're in the process of updating that at the statewide association. So there's a lot of real robust economic potential with this, and so that's part of the reason why we're happy to be able to present it to the city council.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I think, thanks, Woody. So this was a workshop-only, so I know that Mrs. Islas and Mrs. Martinez turned in cards, but we don't do public comment on workshops-only. But thank you for the whole team that showed up today. Very good presentation, very thorough, and so I'm sure council members will continue engaging. By the way, thank you for the private meeting with me, Mike. And so I think we're done with that workshop. Thank you, everybody. And we have another item on our agenda, which is item General Admin 3E. That's a bill for introduction about repealing sections of the Fresno Municipal Code related to semi-truck and trailer parking. It's the Development and Resource Maintenance Department and myself. Yes, Tom, good to see you again.
I don't have anything additional to add beyond the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So, Tom, could you just give us a paragraph of what this is about?
Yeah, absolutely. Based on the conversations that we had with you and your staff back in December, we learned this section of FMC when it was written. The violation was written as an administrative violation, which code enforcement handles, instead of a parking violation. So this is making that transition so that now the parking controllers will be able to be out there and write those violations instead, and then some other sundry text cleanups.
Fantastic. I'll make a motion to approve. You've got a second by Councilman Chavez. And let me go out to the public. Anybody in the public like to address this parking change? Seeing none, come back. We have a motion in a second. Nobody's punched in. All in favor? Motion passes 5, or 6-0 with Councilmember Soria absent. I've been kind of skipping around, but it looks to me like we've completed the public portion.
Yes, I'd like to postpone the legal workshop until next time, and then we have closed session.
So we're going to postpone that legal workshop, and then we can just move into closed session. You need to report coming out of closed session?
No, there won't be anything to report.
All right. Then the public portion of our council meeting today's done, and we're going to go into closed session.
We need to ask if anybody wants to comment on any closed-session item.
Anybody in the public like to comment on closed-session items? All right.
Okay. In closed session, we have a real property negotiation concerning the listed APNs. We have another real property negotiation, again, listing the APNs, C. Gonzalez versus City of Fresno, and also South Central Neighbors United versus City of Fresno.